Yes.
Okay, great. So I will call the Missoula City Council meeting of November 18th to order. I am clearly not your mayor, I'm your city council president. She is at a speaking engagement this evening, so I'm going to be running the meeting, if you will all join me for a pledge of allegiance. Okay, thanks. And the only council member that is not present is Ms. Becerra. So everyone else is present, so we don't need to do a roll call. We have minutes from November 4th and November 6th. Are there any changes to those minutes? I don't see any hands up online, and I don't see anyone in the room. So those two set of minutes will stand approved. Are there any changes to the committee's schedule for November 20th that is posted?
There are no changes.
Okay, great, thank you. And it's my understanding that we do not have any neighborhood council updates this evening. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, great, we're just moving along here. We have one proclamation that I will read. Let's see here. Whereas epilepsy awareness month is a nationwide effort to raise awareness about the epilepsies, seizures, and side effects, as well as to improve the lives of people affected by epilepsy through education, advocacy, research, and connection. And whereas epilepsy is a brain disorder characterized by recurrent and unprovoked seizures that can affect anyone at any age at any time. And whereas epilepsy is the fourth most common neurological disorder, nearly 3.4 million people in the U.S., including over 10,000 in Montana, live with active epilepsy. And whereas protections exist in the Americans with Disabilities Act and related civil rights laws, but people with epilepsy still encounter discrimination in areas including employment, education, and housing. And whereas we must increase public knowledge about the epilepsies and seizures first aid seizure first aid to change the way people think about the epilepsies. Am I saying that correctly? And seizures, decrease stigma, and improve outcomes because 25% of the general public say they would be nervous around a person with epilepsy. Now, therefore, I and for Andrea Davis, Mayor of the City of Missoula and the State of Montana hereby recognize the month of November 2024 as epilepsy awareness month. Do we have anyone here to speak to this proclamation? Okay, great, come on up. And if you'll state your name for the record. Was I saying that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
Really well, thank you. Hello, I'm Jessica Veach. I'm the executive director of the Epilepsy Foundation in Montana. And as you just said, nearly 11,000 people in the state have epilepsy. And so the foundation is a nonprofit that works to spread awareness and reduce stigma and education. And so we are just really honored to be here tonight, really thankful that you took the time to proclaim November to be epilepsy awareness month in the state. So thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for coming. I appreciate it, and I was kind of astounded by those numbers, although I have had some contact with that in my life. So thank you for coming, and I appreciate getting this out there and getting it on people's radars in a way that it probably is not. So we'll move on then. Thanks again to number five, which we have a few, actually, a few public hearings tonight. State law and city council rules set guidelines for inviting community comment in a formal way on certain issues. Following a staff report on each of the issues, the city council and the mayor invite community comment. City council holds a public hearing on the item. A member of council makes a motion, and a vote is taken. The public hearing and vote take place on the same night unless there's a reason to hold over the vote to a later meeting. So we are going to take public comment. I'm not sure what everyone's here for tonight, maybe lots of different things, which is great. But we will take public comment before we vote, but after there's a motion on the floor on each of these items. So I think the first item is the Park on North Scott Street Open Space Project, and I think Zach Covington is here to present on that.
Okay, thank you. Good to see everybody. Okay, so my name is Zach Covington. I'm the Open Space Program Manager for the City Department of Parks and Recreation, and presenting on the Park on North Scott Street Open Space Project. And I wanted to just acknowledge a few people online and in the room. We've got Nathan McLeod, our Senior Landscape Architect in Parks and Recreation. I think Donna, Donna Doppler may be here in the room or online, the Director of Parks and Recreation. And we've got John Adams with Special Projects, Annie Korski with Missoula Redevelopment Agency. And then I'll introduce a couple others later on in the presentation. So this is a fee simple acquisition by the city, proposed acquisition of 5.4 acres for the use of the future park in the north side and west side neighborhoods, currently owned by the Resurrection Cemetery Association and the Catholic Diocese of Helena. This park would be proposed to replace White Pine Park, providing an additional 2.4 acres to the historical three acres White Pine Park was. There's some of the park on the north end that's been demolished to make room for a roadway. So the plan is for the disposal of White Pine Park to help fund the development costs with the new park. This is a map of the proposed 5.4 acre acquisition using open space bond funds. It surrounds New St. Mary's Cemetery on the west and south sides. There's an additional half acre on the west side of Shakespeare Street that's also owned by RCA. And this would, this open space money would not be funding that half acre, but would be only going towards the open space parkland part of the project. But that is something that through the MRA funding, that would also, if this vote goes through, that would also be acquired by the city. So this is in a low to moderate income neighborhood with substantial barriers to parkland, trails, and open space. As you all know, there's been significant population growth and is planned to be more population growth in these neighborhoods. And so with the Velagio, which is a 200-unit complex with 600 residents currently living there, it's fairly new. Revara is a planned development with another potential 309 total units. And just by some quick math, that's potentially 1,400 to 1,500 new residents in those neighborhoods. And so this area, as I'm sure you've seen, is fairly underserved related to parkland. The city standards per the 2004 Master Parks and Recreation Plan, and I got to put a plug in that we're actually currently updating that plan right now, the post-plan update. It's kind of an old plan that we're updating. But the city standards have been two and a half acres per thousand residents for level of service standards. And currently, the north side and west side neighborhoods are at about 1.22 acres per thousand residents. So less than half of the acreage that we normally would want for a neighborhood park. With the new park added, that would go up to about 1.44, still around, around a little bit over than half. It's still deficient, but it's, but it's better. This, this neighborhood needs better park space for local residents. So this also helps implement the 2016 North Reserve Scott Street Master Plan. And the city's been working with the Resurrection Cemetery Association for a number of years, and they've been great partners to help us look at the possibility of increasing parkland for these neighborhoods. So project, proposed timeline, as you can see, the, in 12th of September, the Open Space Advisory Committee voted unanimously to recommend the project. There's already been a, and I believe there's been two conceptual design workshops, and these are just really preliminary workshops to start helping the local residents brainstorm on what they would like for a park like this in their neighborhood. So something that these, particularly the north side neighborhood, has never really had the opportunity to do. So it's a pretty exciting opportunity. On October 31st, the Missoula Redevelopment Agency unanimously approved funding to help leverage these open space dollars. And so there's, there's a lot of funding coming to the table. And we hope to close, if, depending on the outcome of this public hearing, end of 2024. So this is a context map showing the park on North Scott Street in dark green at the top of the map, and its context and relationship with the existing White Pine Park to the south in purple, and also the relationship with North Side Park and North Side Annex Park, along with West Side Park in the west side neighborhood. White Pine Park is now closer to two acres since that northern section's been demolished. Scott Street is a pretty major access barrier, not only to White Pine Park, but some of the other important parts of the neighborhood. And so this park really will open up that access. There's also a lot of industrial type uses and around White Pine Park. And this property on North Scott Street that we're looking at is a lot less encumbered by utilities. So the plan again is to dispose of White Pine Park to help fund the development of the new park. Okay, the, the new park will also be centrally located, as I mentioned, near a diversity of housing types and more walkable and bikeable. North of the, of the proposed park, there's already a multi-use pathway just south of Velagio. There's also plans for multi-use pathway to go up Scott Street. So just much better connected to the community. So I just wanted to show you this map mostly to emphasize that the light yellow is what is owned by the city, with the exception of what's circled in red, that's now privately owned. So it makes a lot of sense that these properties are purchased by the city, not only for the park, but also opposite or, excuse me, separate from this project. That purple property would likewise be purchased using MRA funding. So when we look at project eligibility for open space projects, we know that this is a little bit different than a, than a traditional open space project where you're conserving wildlife habitat and view sheds and protecting watersheds. But I wanted to put this in here to remind everyone that urban green spaces per the 2019 Open Space Plan adopted by the city and county are a really critical part of the open space system in our community. For a lot of reasons, parks are considered open space land according to state code. Per state code, funds can be used, open space funds can be used to secure park, recreational, historic, and scenic areas. And it's an eligible use of open space bonds to secure parkland for a neighborhood per the city-county interlocal agreement. I think I covered most of this. So I want to emphasize too that preserving any type of parkland per the Open Space Plan has climate resiliency benefits, provides growth management, and provides a wide range of health benefits for the general public. So this, we feel, is critical urban space in an urbanizing area, helps with climate resiliency and equity. The park space would be accessible to people of all abilities, incomes, ages, ethnicities, backgrounds. And even per the Community Health Assessment from Missoula Public Health, there's positive impacts from access to parks and trails to the public, physical, mental, and social health, positive impacts. So as you may know, the city is what's considered a 10-minute walk community. And so the goal of the city is to have a park within 10 minutes of a walk for every resident. And that, that can be fairly difficult to do within some of these currently developed areas, and this is a great opportunity to provide that for local residents. Also part of, as part of the vetting process that the Open Space Advisory Committee and staff look at, we always make sure that these projects are complying with and reflecting open space bond purposes and as well as values and the, and priorities in the urban area open space plan. And we look at city ordinance. 12.56 is the open space ordinance for the city. And there's aesthetic, recreational, and historic benefits to this, to this property and per state code. As I mentioned, this also helps characterize the direction, timing, and placement of community development in the future. And this definitely reflects strategic pillars for the city as a whole. So I wanted to put this up to remind you again of the two different properties, the green being the one that will utilize open space bond funds to acquire. But I wanted to show you this slide, budget and funding sources related to the entire project first, so you can kind of get a grasp of how much the total project will cost. So, so including the purple or the property west of Shakespeare, that half acre, there's 5.9 total acres with 5.4 acres of parkland. But the total, total value of that property is 2.46 million per the appraised value, including some due diligence costs, which we, we always need on these types of projects, and pre-development costs, including water analysis and surveying at about 70,000 total. Total project estimated cost is 2.53 million. The Missoula Redevelopment Agency, if we go down to funding sources, as I mentioned, approved $2 million contingent on city funding. The request for this public hearing is $530,000, which is about just under 21% of the total cost. So we've got a huge leveraged funding amount. And so total anticipated funds would equal that 2.53 million. So for the open space part of this only, the 5.4 acres, just again to pull you back to that kind of green 5.4 acres of the parkland would cost 2.06 million. The 70,000, of course, with due diligence, pre-development costs for a total of 2.13 million. And the amount of the MRA funding going towards the parkland would only be 1.6 million. And the open space bond fund ask is 530,000 for a total of 213 million. Okay, so in summary, this project protects multiple open space values based on state and local codes and ordinances and per the open space plan and interlocal agreement between the city and county, supports existing master plan goals, and preliminary post-planning goals that we've seen in public engagement to date from the updated plan process, has multiple climate equity and housing benefits related to much needed parkland in an urbanizing area and underserved, for underserved populations. And the MRA funding request, again, was approved by contingent on this funding by the MRA Board in October. Okay, so I'd like to invite a couple of people up just to, just to make a few comments real quick, if that's okay. Jim Carney with Resurrection Cemetery Association can talk a little bit about RCA's kind of philosophy with this project. And then I'll have Danny Gunlock from the Open Space Advisory Committee share some comments as well.
Great, thank you, come on up.
Hello, my name is Jim Carney, and I'm the Treasurer of the Resurrection Cemetery Association and the Chancellor and Chief Financial Officer for the Roman Catholic Bishop of Helena, which people may know as the Diocese of Helena, the Catholic Church in western Montana. We were approached by the city in April 2021 about purchasing this property. We had some other interest for different types of developments, but the Catholic Church and the cemeteries are excited about the possibility of this becoming a park, and we think it's the best use for that land and would be the maximum benefit for the community. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And will you spell your last name? I don't, I think we still need to do that, so go ahead and spell your last name for the record for transcriptionist, thanks.
Danny Gunlock, G-U-N-D-L-A-C-H, Vice Chair of the Open Space Advisory Committee. So I just wanted to provide a few additional comments on top of what Zach was saying. Our committee, as you mentioned, did unanimously support this decision. I think the site visit we did back in July, it probably took all of about two minutes of just walking around out there to see how truly critical this, this piece is. I used to live over in that area, and I had no idea how much, seeing it from the freeway is different than seeing it from up on the ground and seeing all the new development that's going in over there. In addition to being critically underserved with open space, you also have some barriers to, with the freeway and with the railroad to, to access some of the corner, cornerstones of the, on the north side there. It is a different project. We've had a really diverse portfolio of projects that we've got to approve, which has been pretty neat to see, from the river corridor, from supporting urban forests, land trust, conservation easements. So this is something that's different, but this one really hits maybe more than any of them on, on the equity component, which is stated in 2018 post. This is one of our more expensive projects that we've had, but as Zach mentioned, we really look for leverage when we're, we're doing these projects, and only, seeing only 20% of those funds coming out of the open space bond is, is, it's a much lower figure than what we generally see. So we're excited to see this project move forward and excited to see what that public involvement process looks like, so. Thank you.
Thanks, I appreciate that, and I appreciate your service on the OSAC Board.
Okay, so I have a recommended motion here, but I'm happy to answer any questions that council has.
Yeah, thanks. Let's, let's take some questions first. Just so the public knows, council did see this in committee, so we, we have seen all of the public hearings in committee, so we did have an opportunity to ask a lot of questions then, but different questions come up as we move forward and hear different presentations. So I do have a question. I'm, I'm just curious with, I know our goal is 2.5 acres, and that the north side, west side is 1.22, you said. Do you have any sense of where that lines up with other neighborhoods? And is that the lowest neighborhood? Is it, I mean, where, where are we in kind of achieving that goal, I guess?
Yeah, that's a great question, and I, we're right in the middle of that post-planning update, and so I don't know the answer to that yet, but we're getting, we're getting those numbers from our consultant team. There's definitely some areas in Missoula that we would consider, if you can, consider overserved, right? Where there, where they have an abundance of, of access to parkland. And the, this, this neighborhood, in addition to that Franklin of the Fort neighborhood, and some of those areas in preliminary analyses with, with, particularly with the 10-minute walk to a park, that's also one area that's, that's showing as a pretty underserved area. Some of the midtown to the west a little bit, I would say, around Brooks is also showing up to be a little bit underserved, but no specific data on that yet.
Yeah, that, just a question that came up. I think that'd be interesting to look at at some point, and I definitely understand that this neighborhood, and particularly that, that area of this neighborhood has taken on some, some real density of housing. So I'm going to go to questions from council. Sierra, go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks, Zach, for this presentation. I'm really excited about this park, and thank you to OSAC for voting unanimously for it. I think this is a good use of open space bond funds. I think I asked this question in committee, but I wanted to ask it again with the public here, because I know that the neighborhood's kind of nervous about the sale of the White Pine Park and then the development of the new park. Can you talk about, is there a period of time where this neighborhood will be without a park? Or can it, can we request it be a short amount of time, if possible?
Yeah, I might defer to Donna on that, if that's okay, Donna?
Thanks, Zach. Donna Doppler, Director, Parks and Recreation. And yes, it is our goal to hold that park as long as we possibly can. We're closely with the neighborhood because we too would like to retain it, and at the same time, we want to have a good sense of what the economic results will be from it, so we have a clear budget on what we can do with the new park on North Scott. So as little time as possible in between, hopefully none.
Great, thank you. Thanks. You're, you're finished, Sierra? Okay, great. Bob, go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am, President. Zach, yeah, thank you very much for the presentation. In lieu of the Interlin Open Space Acquisition, I'm learning then at this point what would be the remaining balance for open space fund?
Yeah.
If, if this were approved tonight?
Yeah, great question. So with the Interlin being approved and with, without this being approved, there's 3.11 million remaining out of the 7.5 million total out of the 7.5 million open space bond fund. We do have these kind of undertaking, you know, buckets per the interlocal agreement, and, and those are just kind of recommended buckets for, for, I'll just read them to you real quick. Clark Fork River Restoration and Access, and then acquisitions, which this falls under, Conservation Lands and Trailheads, Reforestation and Restoration and Trails. And so just out of the acquisition bucket, there's 800, and this is if this project was not, this is without including this project, I should say, 861,000 roughly in that, in that bucket. And so that's current, that's current status.
Did you have any other questions, Bob?
So roughly, it'd take us down to eight, 330,000, give or take.
Voter-approved amount was the first amount that you read.
Yeah, what was that?
The, the first amount that you read that's left in the 7.5 million, that is the city's portion of the 15 million open space bond, is the actual number that we have left in the bond? That's just generally how we wanted to allocate each of, toward acquisition, toward restoration?
Right, 3.1, 3.11 million is what we have left in the actual bond.
My point in that is we have the ability to move that around as we see fit.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Bob. Eric, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. No questions, but I'm happy to make the recommended motion.
Okay, I was going to leave, I was going to leave that to Jennifer, but that's good. We have a motion on the floor. Appreciate that. I'm going to go to public comment on the motion. I just want to remind anyone that's coming up to comment that this is, we are commenting on the allocation of the open space bond funds, not any of the other funding mechanisms around this. So if you would like to comment on this, you have three minutes. Obviously, we need to keep things respectful. I don't think that that's going to be an issue here, but sometimes it is. And you need to state your name for the record and spell it, please. Yes?
Would somebody please read the motion, since it's Monday night?
Okay, that sounds good. I'm going to let, I'm going to have Jennifer actually repeat the motion, or read the motion. Go ahead.
So the motion is to adopt a resolution approving the expenditure of up to $530,000, $530,000 of the 2018 open space bond funds toward the fee simple acquisition, acquisition of approximately 5.4 acres of property from the Resurrection Cemetery Association to meet level of service needs for the quickly growing north and west side neighborhoods. I'll speak to it.
Okay, that sounds great. I'll, I'll go ahead and thank you for reminding me of that, Mike. So if anyone would like to comment on the expenditure of open space bond funds for this project, please come up to the microphone or raise your hand online. Okay, so I don't see anyone coming up, so I'm going to go ahead and go back to council for comments. And Jennifer, I'm going to go to you first, but if you'd like to make a comment beyond that, please queue up.
Thank you very much. No, I just wanted to say how much I appreciate staff realizing that this was going to be an issue when we were approving the Rivera project, and knowing how hard the north side fought for White Pine Park, and that staff began working, you know, almost immediately as we were having conversations about the Rivera development, about how to find more park.
parkland for the north side, specifically with all of the new neighbors that we have. So I very much appreciate it and I think the neighborhood will be greatly served by this larger green space that we'll all be happy to access. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks. Bob, go ahead.
Thank you ma'am president. Yes, I'm gonna be very much in support of approving this $530,000 of open space bond funds. To me, this is, again, getting back my comments on Interlin, this is in my mind more than intended use of what these open space bond funds are for. This is something that's gonna have a direct benefit to the community, it's gonna be utilized by community. It is an area that's in dire need of more open land and park space and park playground space and, you know, whatever else we come up with there, given the population increase and amount of housing that's being developed up there in the coming years. So for those reasons, very much support. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Eric?
Yeah, I just wanna echo my wardmate and say thanks to Zach, OSAC and park staff that have worked really hard on this. I've heard from a lot of north side residents about the importance of White, White Parn, White Pine Park. And it, I'm just super excited to share the purchase and eventual development with those neighbors. So yeah, thanks to everyone involved in this.
Yeah, thanks. I echo what everyone has said. I'm in support of this, I think, as we ask residents of the city to live more densely and to take on more housing, which we desperately need. We also need to make sure that we have open spaces for them. So with that, I don't, I can't lower your hand, so if you don't have a question or a comment, if you would do that yourself, that would be great, helpful for me. And with that, I'm gonna go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Stacy Anderson?
Yes.
Uh, Bob Campbell?
Yes.
Daniel Carlino?
Yeah, yes.
Sierra Farmer?
Yes.
Gwen Jones?
Yes.
Kristen Jordan?
Yes.
Eric Melson?
Yes.
Mike Nugent?
Yes.
Jennifer Savage?
Yes.
Amber Sherrill?
Yes.
Sandra Busica?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. And then we'll move on to 5.2 with, which is an ordinance amending the Missoula Municipal Code Title 10 Vehicle and Traffic Related to Public Works and Mobility Department. Troy, are you online?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone that came for the last, the last public hearing. I'm gonna go ahead and pass it over to you then, Troy. Thanks.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am Troy Monroe, City Engineer for Development Review. Also attending is Kevin Slovarp, City Engineer for Surface Transportation. We bring to you today amendments to the Missoula Municipal Code Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic. The First Amendment is a new section to Chapter 10.20 titled Neighborhood Traffic Calming Circles. Neighborhood traffic calming circles are one of five different types of circular intersections, all others being different types of roundabouts. A neighborhood traffic calming circle is designed to slow traffic in an uncontrolled intersection within residential neighborhoods. As shown in the upper exhibit, traffic flows in a counterclockwise movement around the exterior of the circle. Since neighborhood traffic calming circles utilize the existing curb lines, they remain in uncontrolled intersection and following state law, vehicles to the left yield to vehicles to the right. As mentioned, neighborhood traffic circles utilize the existing intersection curb lines. As their design is to slow traffic and passenger cars are the majority of traffic within residential neighborhoods, the circle has to encroach within the traffic lane to require a passenger vehicle to slow and to make a curved movement. Being able to successfully slow a passenger car means that the less common truck or bus would have a difficult, if not impossible, task of following the counterclockwise movement. Therefore, large vehicles needing to make a left turn will need to do so prior to the traffic circle, as shown in the lower exhibit. Since neighborhood traffic calming circles are only used on low-volume residential streets, this movement can be done safely when there are no oncoming traffic. This amendment to Title 10 makes a left turn for large vehicles not subject to a vehicle traffic violation. Our next amendment to Title 10 deals with sensitive infrastructure. The United States Marshal Service, who are responsible for the security of federal courthouses, reached out to the city to discuss threats to sensitive infrastructure, such as the federal courthouse at Patty and Broadway. One mechanism to reduce the threat to courthouses is to create a buffer between the building and vehicles. This amendment to Chapter 1022 adds sensitive infrastructure to areas that may be designated as no parking towaway zones when properly marked. Two examples are shown here, the federal courthouse at Patty and Broadway and the law enforcement parking on Woody Street. The add to the no parking towaway zones just mentioned is a need to immediately remove vehicles that pose a threat. An amendment to Chapter 1033 adds county, state and federal law enforcement officers to those who are currently allowed to remove vehicles without prior notice from certain no parking areas. The final amendment to Title 10 deals with truck routes. Truck routes, every truck route, is listed in title. As new roads are built and old roads rebuilt to accommodate different traffic, the list of truck routes needs to be updated. Public Works and Mobility believes that the list of truck routes would be better located within the Public Works Manual, which is updated yearly through council. Our request today is for council to set, okay. That's it. Both Kevin and myself are available for questions. Thank you.
Great, thanks. And we have, on the agenda, we have the recommended motion from staff and then we have some amendments. We're gonna talk about those in a second. Right now, we're only going to ask questions about the recommended motion, the first motion. And do we have any, again, we, we have seen, we've seen this, but do we have any questions? Bob? Oh, sorry, I didn't see your hand up. Go ahead.
Sorry, I just put it up.
Okay, okay.
So perhaps this question is for Troy or perhaps the city attorney. With regard to the roundabout amendment within municipal code, have we reached out to the city attorney's office or police as far as, I'm just saying in terms of enforcement, should there, should this be implemented and there be some sort of accident? And I'm just scratching my head and wondering if this creates a conflict between state statute for making left turns at intersections or turns at roundabouts and the way accidents are investigated in light of now a municipal code that would potentially be conf, or contrary to what's in state statute?
I will defer that to either Kevin or Ryan.
Okay, whoever wants to answer, go ahead.
Well, I believe Kevin has looked into this from the perspective of, Kevin tried to look into this from the perspective of state law and I, I think Kevin can weigh in on his interpretation of the elements of state law at issue, but, and then I can weigh in, fill in any gaps.
Kevin, you wanna take this then?
Yeah, yeah, thanks. Kevin Slovarp, City Engineer for Surface Transportation, as Troy previously mentioned. So it's, it's, well, first off, I, I wanna talk about the definitions of the facilities. So a traffic calming circle is what we're talking about here. It's the, the smaller circles that, that are generally around town at intersections of two local streets. We're not allowing the, the other, the other definition I wanted to mention is roundabouts. Roundabouts were not, are typically made big enough for vehicles, large vehicles that we're talking about being able to turn left in front of these traffic calming circles. We're not allowing those larger vehicles to make the same left turn movement at those larger facilities that are generally called roundabouts. So wanted to make that clear. So we did, Ryan and I did work on this language, what we wanted to, it, it's, it's, it's allowed in state law for these traffic calming circles, not for roundabouts or larger, even larger roundabouts called rotaries. That's, that's not what we're talking about here. So, so if a, a large vehicle driver makes a left turn at a roundabout or a rotary, then they can be ticketed for that maneuver. And so, yes, this does, this language does work with state law and previously Ryan and I had worked out the, the language that you see here on your screen. We wanted to, to add that school bus or type SU40 and towed units to the language to really give, give people an understanding that not all large vehicles or even like trucks, like a, a passenger truck, you know, wouldn't be able to allow, this would allow those types of trucks to, to make these left turn movements. It's just the larger type trucks that, that these SU40 and, and, and school bus are examples of that, that actually can't make this, this three-quarter movement going around the circle, the traffic calming circle in the proper way. And so we're, we're allowing them to take a, a left in front of the circle only if it is safe to do so. They, so they have to be cautious before making this turn and, and really don't see that it's a, that it's a very substantial risk because these are, again, local streets. There's not a lot of traffic on them and then we're leaving it up to that large vehicle driver that they can't make that movement until it's really safe to do so.
You know, if I could follow up, I think that last point by City Engineer Kevin Slovarp is the critical element here with respect to an accident that would occur at one of these. The, you can't enter an intersection if it's not safe to do so. So if you're gonna be bypassing a traffic circle, you need to look to make sure that it's clear and safe to do so. If it's not and there's an accident, this provision in city code isn't gonna absolve that person from liability because there was a, an allowance for making that movement if they made it when it wasn't safe to do so. So I, I, I defer to Kevin and his analysis for what's a, a traffic, a local traffic circle versus a traffic rotary from an engineering perspective. And so I don't think this conflicts with state law and then to the extent that there was an accident, it would be a fact-specific inquiry into whether or not it was safe at the time that a large truck looked to bypass the traffic circle. You know, it could be that the person coming from the other direction was traveling at night without their lights off or so maybe there was some sort of circumstances that, that may tend to say that the person wasn't in the wrong, but, you know, in a situation where there's a car, you know, during the daytime, it's obvious, open and apparent, is entering the intersection and a, and a truck looks to make a left turn and hits that car, you know, it's, it's gonna be likely that that person's gonna be found, you know, in violation or, or operating his vehicle in a negligent manner. So, and, and again, I don't think that this provision, just allowing that movement is, is gonna affect that analysis. If that answers your question.
For the most part, it does. I just, my concern also is with regard to any vehicle, be it a Missoula resident, someone from out of town who comes to an intersection like that, come to a traffic calming circle like this and have an expectation that traffic coming from the right is going, followed around about and all of a sudden, you know, they have a, they're seeing the grow of a, you know, 18 wheeler or a school bus or something. So I just wanna make sure that we're covering all bases on that. Thank you.
And Kevin, if, if you said this, I apologize. The difference between a calming circle and a roundabout, is that traffic load or size or how are we differentiating that? How are we making that differentiation?
Yeah, thanks. I, maybe I didn't say it more specifically, but yes, it, traffic calming circles are generally at the intersection of two local roads that both have relatively low volumes of traffic in terms of average annual daily traffic. And then roundabouts and, and even larger circles called rotaries, they're generally larger in size and, and a form of, of traffic control, like a, a traffic signal, that they're normally placed on roadways that have higher volume. And, and so they're, they're larger, they're both circular devices, but roundabouts and rotaries are, are definitely larger in size than traffic calming circles and there would be no, more traffic on the streets that, that a roundabout or rotary would be situated on.
Great, thanks. So it's both is, is really the, the case. Okay, Kristen, go ahead.
Thank you. I think this might be for you, Mr. Sudbury. I'm curious what the indication or indicating or signaling requirements are going through roundabouts and our traffic circles. Are they the same as four-way stops or turning at any other intersection? Are people supposed to use their blinkers when they turn in and out of a roundabout or a traffic calming circle?
I don't know the answer. That's a good question. I would defer to the police department for the interpretation of that. So I apologize. I think if you're going through, straight through, you don't need to blinker, but if you're making a right turn or when you're making a right turn, you might need to, but I apologize, I don't know the answer to that question.
Did you have another question? Okay. Okay, so I don't see any other questions, any hands up. I'm gonna go to Mr. Nugent for, to get the motion on the floor.
Thank you, President Sherrill. I move city council to approve an ordinance amending Title 10 of the Missoula Municipal Code to update regulations pertaining to traffic and parking by adding a new section 10.20.180, amending section 10.22.070, repealing and deleting section 10.22.210, amending section 10.33.020 and amending section 10.32.040 to allow for large vehicles to turn left at traffic calming circle if no oncoming traffic is present, prohibiting parking on streets and alleys adjacent to government buildings if signage indicates the area is reserved for government use. Parking, clarifying when a vehicle may be removed for illegal parking and allowing for the Director of Public Works Mobility to amend or provide for truck routes within the city limits by administrative rule, effective December 18th, 2024.
Great, thank you. So we have a motion on the floor, so we're gonna go to public comment on this motion. If anyone is interested in commenting, you can come up to the microphone and you have three minutes. Okay, I don't see anyone in the room. Oh, you do, okay. Come, hold on just a second. If you'll state your name for the record and then I'll start the timer here, you'll see the little lights going off.
My name's Derek Castleman. I was just curious on that whole portion with calming circles. Would that relieve anything with PD? Cause I do run equipment, I do have a longer truck and with those calming circles, I do residential tree work. I've been impacted, two tickets so far for that. Would that relieve anything on me on it? Because in reality, the school buses do it, the garbage truck does it already. I just happened to be at the wrong place at the wrong time. My equipment's too big. My truck and trailer, it's a regular passenger truck, too big for most of these circles to turn. Would that relieve like everything? Cause this is a business I run. Would that relieve everything on my record for that?
So this, we don't do a back and forth, but you can pose the question, then we might ask that question for you, which I am gonna do in just a second. So Ryan, I don't know if you can answer that question for us or if we need to just get back with you.
Yeah, we'd probably need to get back from you. I don't know what he was cited, I don't know what you were cited for, so it's hard to say if this would affect that. I assume it would not, cause this would be an amendment moving forward, so it's prospective rather than, you know, if you, if you were in violation of the law, that was the law at the time, it stands. If you haven't, if you haven't paid the ticket, you can go to court and try and argue that it shouldn't, that the judge should waive the fees based on this change in the underlying law and they may- And they may, it may be amenable to that. But it would be up to the judge.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
Me as the bicyclist that tours the city and so forth. I realize these little spots in these streets to slow down traffic in these high end neighborhoods.
Please state your name.
Carl Spitzmacher, Big K Montana, or Lord Life Montana, however you want to realize it as we're moving on. So forth, I've seen them in the city. This gentleman that just spoke last said volumes. And the length of some of these vehicles, I looked up the circumstances of roundabout and these, what do you call these posts that slow down traffic? Thirty feet or more. And if they're articulating some of these motorhomes, can they make these circles? Don't underestimate the intelligence of the driver that's pulling an apparatus that's thirty feet or longer. And if they don't have the discretion of public safety on the advocacy, oh, just run over what you're going to do when you're going to make that nice big left hand turn. Just destroy property. When public safety does not make a good value over the ignorance of themselves, of the intelligence of pulling a vehicle that they understand as an operator, there's something wrong in the city.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the room? And I don't see any hands up online. So I'm going to come back to council. And we can make comments, but I also understand that Mr. Cardelino has an amendment. And I'm a little confused which amendment you're bringing forward. So are you bringing both of those amendments forward? Because, go ahead, can you speak to this?
Yeah, no, I think it'd be best just to go with the second recommended motion amendment, to still allow school buses, but to not make this change that would allow large vehicles to go into oncoming traffic on the traffic circles. And the main reason for making that amendment is that I'm worried about that this could potentially cause more car crashes in town when somebody's expecting, not expecting a large vehicle to be going into oncoming traffic. And then also, when people see, you know, trucks doing this, they might also copy that with their passenger vehicles. And overall, I think it's safer that everybody goes in the correct direction and not into oncoming traffic. So I don't feel comfortable making that change at this time.
Okay, so we have an amendment on the floor. Just so, Claire and Justice, you understand, he is going with the second, the alternative amendment language. Is that correct, Mr. Cardelino? I'm hearing you correctly?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
It's on the agenda.
Yeah, it's on the agenda. If you want to pop that up on the screen, though, maybe, Justice, that would be great, just so the audience can see it and those online can see it without going back. Are there any council questions about? Oh, I see people lining up. Okay, Sandy, go ahead.
Thanks. Whoever wants to answer this question regarding Mr. Cardelino's concerns, I reached out to a couple people that I know that do work with larger vehicles. And I asked them how they felt about this. And with, I don't want to give anybody away, but it sounds like this is already happening on a pretty large scale. So I guess my question is, with this already happening, I guess illegally, have there been any accidents that we know of because of people taking a left hand turn like this?
Who wants to take that one?
Well, I'll start. This is Kevin Silvarp again. And I apologize, my camera isn't working right now for whatever reason. But I am not aware that there's been a crash or, you know, any close calls that have occurred from any large vehicles that may already be making this maneuver. So that's what I have. I can't also say that no crashes have occurred, or close calls have occurred, but I just don't, I don't know about any of them.
Okay, yeah, and I understand that it's not a solid answer. And I appreciate your input. And I guess that's all of my questions. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I don't see any hands up. Did you have your hand? It was, I saw it up and then it's down now. It's very weird, but go ahead and ask a question.
My question is, I have had a constituent who's reached out to me on a pretty regular basis who lives at one of these traffic calming circles where this has been happening. And what is happening is that their yard is being cut across because there is no sidewalk or curb cut or anything. And I'm wondering, maybe this is for you, Mr. Silvarp, has the city received any official complaints about people cutting corners across yards? Because being in Ward Six, we don't have a lot of sidewalks and infrastructure to kind of delineate people from yards. And it is a problem, especially when we don't have people, yeah, it is a problem. So I'm just curious if you have any information about that.
No, I don't. I think that that definitely is a possibility. It probably occurs a lot more than folks, you know, would even report. I don't know necessarily how somebody would report, you know, a cut across that damages property. I guess it would be filing a police report. But, yeah, those reports aren't getting to me. But definitely that, you know, these traffic calming circles work better or best if there is curb on the surrounding corners, definitely to keep vehicles basically on the road or within the street. And so if there are locations where we have a traffic calming circle that doesn't also have curbs, I think that those are the ones that we want to look at closely and try to get that other infrastructure in before we then make additional improvements to the intersection itself. So we do want to get that other infrastructure in. And usually that, the corner curb and sidewalk is in prior to when we would normally establish a traffic calming device such as these traffic calming circles.
Your hand's up now. Did you have another question?
I did, yeah, it got put down, but I still have another question. Who should people call if they don't want to call the police and/or they didn't see who cut across their yard? Who should people call? I think that's for you, Mr. Silvarp.
Is it strictly because there's a traffic calming circle at an intersection with no curb on the outside of it?
Yeah, there's quite a few in Ward Six with no infrastructure surrounding them and yards are getting cut across.
Okay. Yeah, they can call myself. That'd be, that'd be fine.
Okay, thank you.
And I actually have a, now your hand's up again, Kristen. It went down and then it's up. I have a quick question just to follow up on that. If there is no infrastructure, there are no curb cuts, wouldn't a large vehicle going around the roundabout fully and not taking a left as we're proposing, wouldn't that cut into more yards? I'm imagining a lot of yards being hit that way. Is that a correct assumption there or is it not?
That would be a correct assumption, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just imagining without the infrastructure there that they would go around the correct way, but then would be in also more yards. Okay, so did you have another question?
Yeah, somebody keeps putting my hand down and I go to put it down and then I end up putting my hand back up or vice versa. I just wanted to clarify that what ends up happening in Ward Six is people actually drive across the traffic calming circle and take down the delineators rather than going through somebody's yards. So when they turn left and cut the corner, they're cutting the corner of yards. But if they go all the way around a roundabout, they're taking out the delineators, which is not private property. I just wanted to clarify based on what I've been hearing from my ward.
Okay. Okay, so no more questions from council. We are going to take public comment on the amendment only. If you have public comment on the amendment, please come up. And I don't see anyone online with their hand up. So we're going to go ahead and take a roll call vote on the, oh, right, we go to comments first, but Troy has his hand up. So Troy's going to go first and then we're going to go to comments and then we're going to go to a vote. I'm sorry, go ahead, Troy.
Okay, thank you, Troy Monroe, City Engineer, Development Review. I did want to just clarify something and I may need Kevin Silvarp to correct me if I'm wrong. But how we understand that the traffic circle is the example we see on the screen here, where this is still an uncontrolled intersection, the traffic circle is an obstacle placed in the street that vehicles have to maneuver around, the same as we would have a chicane. So this again is an uncontrolled intersection. A roundabout is where we reverse the responsibility of vehicles into the traffic, into an actual circle rotation, a one direction, counterclockwise movement. So the public will know that they're in a roundabout when they are faced with a yield sign when entering that circular motion. So that's definitely a way that the public can tell whether they are approaching a traffic circle, which maintains the uncontrolled intersection responsibility, or if they're doing a roundabout where they now have to yield to those that are in the circle movement. Additionally, I just wanted to make a comment in regards to this last gentleman who was up here. Prior to myself being known, I was going to be presenting this, I approached this traffic circle at Shilling's and Fifth Street, and I was pulling a trailer at the time. There was no way for me to maneuver around it. Trailer's what we do, it's called overtracking and it's where your trailer radius is much tighter than your vehicle radius. So I would wipe this out if I'd gone in the proper direction. As you can see here, it's a dead end beyond, there's without a cul-de-sac. I couldn't be able to turn around a truck and trailer. And to the right is also a dead end without a cul-de-sac. My only choice was to make that maneuver in front of the traffic circle. And I did it safely. And it was, it's what you need to do when you have a truck and trailer in neighborhoods, in these low residential neighborhoods. So just want to make that. Thank you.
Appreciate that clarification. Okay, we're going to council comments before we go to vote. And council comments on the amendment, please. Go ahead, Gwen.
Okay, thanks. I think my comments also go to the main motion because they just overlap, so I'll just do this once. So I live on a corner and there is a traffic calming circle on our intersection there. It went in eighteen years ago. And first of all, I just want to say traffic circles are awesome. There were horrendous accidents on our intersection prior to the traffic circle going in. Cars up in people's yards impacting their houses. It was terrible. Traffic calming circle has been great. We have not had any accidents. And over eighteen years, there have been times when I have seen big trucks or trucks and trailers making left turns instead of going all the way around it. And there haven't been any problems, haven't been any accidents, and it works pretty well. And I think people driving the big rigs are pretty conscientious. Additionally, I will say that, I think it was Fourth and Hazel, I was talking with a constituent about a year and a half to two years ago, we were standing in the roundabout or in the traffic calming circle, sorry, talking about it because this gentleman maintains the landscaping in it. And as we were talking, a big truck and a trailer, I think it was a lawn service, went around the traffic circle the correct way and wiped out a bunch of the landscaping while we were standing there. And I thought my constituent was going to have an aneurysm. So anyway, all I'm saying, that's been my experience. I am not in favor of the amendment. I think we just need to make it clear in the law that the bigger vehicles, the trucks, the trailers, the school buses, they can turn left. They need to be careful. They need to be looking for folks. But in general, ninety-seven percent of the traffic that goes around our traffic circle is, it's cars and people are doing it right. Every once in a while, somebody takes a shortcut and if they get caught and get a ticket, so be it. But anyway, so I'm not in favor of the amendment, but I'm definitely in favor of the full motion.
Thanks, Kristen.
Yeah, thank you, Daniel, for bringing this forward. I do think there are some unaddressed issues that we're overlooking. I don't know how many folks have been at the roundabout on Kemp and Fourth Street in my ward. And this is where, actually, it's a traffic calming circle. And this is where I've gotten calls from neighbors. And this is not an unusual intersection in Ward Six where we don't have curbs and boulevards and whatnot. This traffic calming circle is a really small, it's a really big circle in a really small space. And particularly when we don't require turning on traffic, or sorry, I keep thinking Australian indicators, but our blinkers, people are not required to use blinkers through roundabouts or traffic calming circles. I think this is going to introduce a lot of mayhem. And I know other wards have more infrastructure and bigger spaces to put traffic calming circles, much like the one that my colleague was just speaking to in her ward in Ward Three. But in Ward Six, we're putting traffic calming circles on small roads with no sidewalks and no boulevard, no gutters. And we don't require people to use their turn signals. And I struggle with it, as folks know, with the lack of infrastructure in my ward. And again, see that this particular amendment, not the amendment, but the original motion would cause traffic issues in my ward because we don't have that infrastructure. So I appreciate, Daniel, that you brought this forward because my ward's not like other wards and we don't have the space that other wards have for a lot of these traffic calming circles for people to get around. And unfortunately, I think people should take alternative routes like Johnson Street or other bigger roads that go through my ward. And of course, if the police or the fire department needs to make a run through it, the traffic calming circles do have the delineators that can be run over if they need to go straight through. But this particular motion does not accommodate the needs of my ward and its lack of infrastructure. And so I'll be supporting your motion tonight. Thank you, Daniel.
Okay, I don't see anyone else's hands up. So we are going, we've had council comment, we're going to go to a vote on the amendment.
Bob Campbell.
No.
Daniel Cardelino.
Yes.
Sierra Farmer.
No.
Gwen Jones. Gwen Jones.
No.
Kristen Jordan.
Yes.
Eric Nelson.
No.
Mike Nugent.
No.
Jennifer Savage.
No.
Amber Sherrill.
No.
Sandra Vasika. And Stacy Anderson.
No.
The amendment fails.
Okay, then we're going to go on to council comments on the original motion that was made. And does anyone have any council comments on the original motion before we go to vote? Okay, I don't see any council comments, no hands up online. I don't see anything in person. So we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
Daniel Cardelino.
No.
Sierra Farmer.
Yes.
Gwen Jones.
Yes.
Kristen Jordan.
No.
Eric Nelson.
Yes.
Mike Nugent.
Yes.
Jennifer Savage.
Yes.
Amber Sherrill.
Yes.
Sandra Vasika.
Yes.
Stacy Anderson.
Yes.
Bob Campbell.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Okay, thanks. We have one, that's our last public hearing, but we do have one order of new We have one, that's our last public hearing, but we do have one order of new business. This is an audit contract for fiscal year, years 24 through 26. Lee, are you on? Yeah, Lee, go ahead, and I see you online. Go ahead and take it from here.
Thank you. Lee Griffin, City Finance Director. I am bringing this audit contract under new business today because we've just had a challenging calendar this month. I would normally bring it to the Budget and Finance Committee. So we issued an RFP as our last contract was up. And representatives from the Finance Department, MRA, and the Parking Commission met as a group and reviewed the submissions, and we finally settled on I.D. Bailey. And this is the contract I'm bringing forward. So it's a contract, it's a three-year contract covering the audits from fiscal year '24 through '26. And the dollar amounts are $84,600 for '24, $88,830 for '25, and $93,275 for FY '26. And that's just the city portion. MRA and MPC have separate contracts that are below the threshold to bring to City Council. And I'm also here for any questions. Thank you.
Lee, this is a new firm, correct, Tess, as far as our audit?
It is a new firm.
Okay. And where were they as far as the, their dollar amount?
Their dollar amounts in relation to prior?
To other bids.
Oh, these folks actually were very competitive, and they did come in at the lowest bid from all the submissions.
Okay, great. Any questions? Okay, no questions, and this would have been in my committee, so anyone want to make the motion for me? Stacy, okay, go ahead.
Yes, happy to, Madam President. I'm happy to make the recommended motion to approve the audit contract with I.D. Bailey for the fees for the FY '24, for $84,600, FY '25, $88,830, and FY '26, $93,275.
Great, thanks. Is there any public comment on this motion? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands up. Okay, are there any council comments? Okay, no council comments. I would say it's really important that we're audited. So that's my only comment. We'll do a roll call vote.
Beginning with Sierra Farmer?
Yes.
Gwen Jones?
Yes.
Kristen Jordan?
Yes.
Eric Nelson?
Yes.
Mike Nugent?
Yes.
Jennifer Savage?
Yes.
Amber Sherrill?
Yes.
Sandra Vasika?
Yes.
Stacy Anderson?
Yes.
Bob Campbell?
Yes.
Daniel Carlino? Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, great. Number seven is public comments for items on the agenda, which really would be the consent agenda, which is number eight. And then number nine, I'm going to go ahead and just take public comment separately on each of those, because I think the number nine might have kind of some more questions and comments around it. So I'd like to do that, just to separate it and keep both of those items clean. So there will be public comment on the consent agenda if you happen in just a second, if you happen to be here for that. So let's go ahead and move to the consent agenda.
Reading the consent agenda. Motion to ratify accounts payable for checks dated November 12, 2024, in the amount of Motion to approve accounts payable for checks dated November 19, 2024, in the amount of Motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the professional services agreement with Morrison &amp; Meyer Lee for the Kelly Island Lift Station at a cost not to exceed Motion to adopt a resolution ordering right-of-way improvements to Eaton Street at a cost not to exceed $256,231.62. Motion to adopt a resolution to establish a posted speed limit of 25 miles per hour for England Boulevard from approximately 200 feet west of the Flynn Lane intersection to Reserve Street, and allow Public Works and Mobility staff to administratively extend this 25 mile per hour speed zone west as adjacent development occurs, based on the engineering study completed by Public Works and Mobility. Motion to authorize and approve the mayor to sign a memorandum of agreement with Missoula Valley Water Quality District to access monitoring well four at MRL Park. Motion for the approval of the Linda Vista Estates subdivision, Phases Three, Four, and Five Phasing Plan Amendment, based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law, and subject to the amended conditions of approval in the staff report. Motion to set a public hearing regarding the adoption of the City of Missoula, R. Missoula 2045 Land Use Plan and Place Type Map for December 9, 2024.
Great, thanks. And just for everyone in the audience, items on the consent agenda were approved at the City Council Committee to be placed on the consent agenda to save time at the council meeting. We vote on them as a package. The city clerk has now read it, and we will now, is there, does anyone want to separate any of these items? Oh, I see a hand up now, hold on. Sorry, when I scroll down, I can't see your hands up. Bob, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to separate out 8.4 and make comment.
Okay, great. First, I'm going to take public comment, and then I'll let you make a quick comment on that. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Okay, I do not see any public comment. Normally, if we make comment, we try to put them on committee report. Oh, do you want to?
I just had it separated.
You'll need to come up, because got to get everything on the record.
Exactly.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I just, since he separated 8.4 out, would there be separate comment from the public on that, or do we talk?
We're going to take all the comment right now, so if you want to comment on 8.4, please go ahead and do that now.
Did, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, okay, thanks. Appreciate the clarification. Come on up and make public comment. I like that. She wants to do it.
She wants to do it.
If you'll, you have three minutes, and then if you will state and then say your, or spell your last name.
Yes, ma'am. I am Trinity Ferguson, T.R.I.N.I.T.Y.F.E.R.G.U.S.O.N. I would like to comment on the proposed curb and sidewalk construction for Eaton Street. My concerns outside of the cost that has been passed along to us as a homeowner being extreme, especially with increased property taxes, increased utilities, inflation, everything that has been handed down to us over the past few years. The $9,000 price tag that has been handed to us is crushing, and it's something that we don't know if we'll even be able to stay in our home because of that. We have been told that we are able to take out a loan with the city, which means that we would be in debt to the city, which again is not something very ideal. And if we have that, it does make it a little bit harder, in my opinion, to sell our home. The next thing that I would like to bring up is the safety on Eaton. We've had increased issues with speeding that have gone unaddressed. We've asked for stop signs, we've asked for increased patrols. None of those really get answered, but now the, I guess the solution is to pass along exorbitant costs to the homeowner to decrease speeding, which there's no stop signs in this plan. There's no traffic control in this plan. It's just sidewalks. My concern along with that is that on Burlington Strand and Central, there are bump outs that are a part of that. I think it's an overdesign. I don't think, in my opinion, that it's necessary. I have been able to talk to Mark about my concerns. He did come to our home. He did tell me that, it's my opinion. And it, that for me just made it seem like it doesn't really matter, in that I don't have a voice in this, which is still very crushing. The last bit, I'm sorry for that to end here. Besides the Burlington's, but the bump outs on this, the cost being a big thing, we have brought up continued issues with how our home sits on a hill. We have been told that, again, that's our opinion, whether we sit on a hill and it's being, you know, excavated against, or it's going to get resawed, it does not matter if it's going to affect our home. It's my, again, it's my opinion against whoever the designer is. So I would like the City Council to take under consideration the fact that there are homes that are going to be affected, there are costs associated with this that are really disheartening. I do feel that the plan is overdeveloped and that it does need evaluation. I do understand, being from Ward Six, that we do not have the infrastructure that everybody wants, but this is extreme, and it really hurts to see that this is what the city is pushing forward, because it'll force us out of our homes.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, so if there is, yeah, please, come on up.
Hi, my name is Sierra Castleman. I own a home on Eaton Street. I've been there for 12 years, I think, and we've always had trouble with speeding. My car was totaled while sitting in front of my home, and nothing was done about it. This plan doesn't reduce speeding. It widens the boulevard. That's about it. Why couldn't we put in traffic circles, calming traffic circles that we were just talking about? I have elderly neighbors who live on a fixed income, who will not be able to pay the cost of this. They don't know where to go. Not only are they losing their yard that my neighbor loves to garden in, that's her thing, but she's now going to have to pay for the loss of her yard, and she can't do that. And it won't solve the problem. It doesn't stop the speeding on Eaton.
Thank you. Would you spell your last name for us? Thank you. Appreciate your comment. Come on up.
Robert Dunlop, 2316 Les Kent. Kent intersects with Eaton. I am one house away from Eaton. I probably attempt to cross Eaton four times a day to get to the bus route to get home. Eaton has become a speedway. The traffic does not stop when you get to the intersection. It's horrible, so I'd like to see more of the roundabouts, but I think the city's trying to make it a through-street, but the drivers pay no attention to pedestrians. So I wish the city police would kind of crack down on that. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. I appreciate that. And, yeah, you can just queue up when you're after him. Go ahead.
Kay Montana, Spitzrocker, S.P.I.T.C., M.A.C., Chair. How many times have I been to this council chambers and heard citizens complain about the city council not concerned about what they're saying? We got three of them here today. We had them here by the pass. And they're complaining to somebody, as I've been complaining about the Pavarello. We don't care, and this is a blue city, and she lost that a good deal.
Okay, thank you. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Erica Schubert, S.C.H.U.B.E.R.T. And I just want to reiterate some of the things that some of the other people have already said. We live on North and Eaton, and eight years ago, we bought our house for $160,000. So, you know, it's not a rich neighborhood. It's definitely gaining in value, but our house is just the same as it always was. And it's going to cost, between the city and us, more than $24,000 to put in 70 feet of sidewalk next to my house. And my portion is more than $7,000. And as someone else said, that's really crushing. More than $7,000, when our taxes have gone up, property values have gone up, but not a lot has actually gone up in what we're making or quality of life here in town. So it's, it just seems really crazy to, $26,000 for 70 feet of sidewalk? That's a lot of money. And it's going to be really hard for my family to swing, and we're, we'll take the, if this passes, we'll take the loan from the city, they'll put the lien against my house, and we'll do what we have to do, because there's no way we can pay anything close to that. The other piece, too, on North and Eaton, is that speeding and traffic is crazy. Maybe a year ago, my neighbor Tom here, a car went through the intersection, went into his house. I think it was, what's that? It went into his house. Last month, there was a car versus motorcycle accident. My other neighbor across the street, cars ended up in her yard three times over the last probably three years. We had a tire fly off someone's speeding truck and hit our house. So it is a big concern, and it's other places on Eaton, too, but I think our intersection's probably especially bad. Thank you.
Thanks, I appreciate your comment. You can come up to the microphone.
My name's Sierra Castleman. I also live on Eaton. The speeding is a huge issue with us, and I really don't think this expansion with the sidewalks and for the boulevards and stuff is going to decrease it at all. In fact, it's probably going to make it worse. I've replaced my fence twice. My neighbors, their house has been hit, their vehicles have been hit. I have lost two trucks, a trailer, just from the speeding alone. I have a kid that likes to play outside, I have to worry about that. I have cameras set up just to watch her as I'm outside, because I'm busy at home. And I don't feel like our city council or representative of our ward really takes into what's happening in our street and just in our neighborhood. The speeding alone, everyone during traffic hours, it picks up. Everyone takes Mount and 14th and just speeds down Eaton just to cut a little bit of time in Reserve Street. We have straightways with no stop signs from South to 14th. Nothing's stopping traffic. They all speed through. Everyone parks their cars on the side of the street, and there's nothing to do about it. PD barely ever shows up anymore about it. It's just, I feel like it would be, instead of doing sidewalks and stuff, I'd be more company into having more stop signs or actual bigger roundabout that we could fit equipment and trucks through. That's all.
Thanks, I appreciate your comment. Is there any other comments on, anything on the consent agenda? Please come on up.
My name is Tom Sheehy. I also live on Eaton.
If you get a little closer to the microphone, we could hear you.
I'm Tom Sheehy. I also live on Eaton Street, and I just want to say what other people have said about the expense of the project. It's, you know, if I went to a contractor and said, you know, what would it cost for me to do this 70 feet of sidewalk, and they told me $18,000, I would definitely tell them to take a hike. You know, it's, it's really expensive, and, you know, they make it kind of fancy with the boulevards. On my property, they're going to disregard the 20 feet of coated sidewalk that I put in and cut up my driveway in order to have a boulevard and reshape my driveway. I mean, I would just wish they would just run the sidewalk down the street, do it the cheapest way they can. Okay, thank you. Bye-bye.
Great, thank you.
Hi, Stephanie Haines, H.A.I.N.E.S. I'm here because I also live on Eaton Street, and it's a similar story, I think, to all of us. I do agree with the terms, overdesigned. I think that what I'm losing in the plan, I only really have 30 feet, 30 to 40 feet of frontage onto Eaton Street, but instead of just running straight down and getting the sidewalk that we need for connectivity and for pedestrians, they're choosing to dip in with a boulevard on my property. I understand I don't necessarily own that land, but I'm used to having that space, and it's my only yard. And so it makes me scared for my property value, that I'm going from like a nice-sized yard that I can play in with my son to like a small yard. So if it just ran right along the curbside, I think it would solve a lot of problems while not causing more cost and issues. I also agreed with the speeding. Um, I also agreed with the speeding and I also have concerns about parking, uh, because if you look at the design, because so much of it is boulevarded, and if you look at who's parking in those blocks, they're all parking within what is going to be that boulevarded space. And so unless they really have a place to put their car, it's all gonna go on Eaton. And so I'm not sure it's wide enough for two cars parked on each side and then the traffic going through. Um, we've had side mirrors hit. Um, anyway, maybe it will slow down traffic, but in such a weird, negative way with having too much on the street and with having people affected and the cost is so high and then taking our yard space in a small area and trying to retrofit a code into an already developed part of the city versus having that boulevard for new construction, which makes more sense when you can build it in and plan for it well. I think that's the difference of the city code being applied, um, to an existing neighborhood versus a new construction. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, is there anyone else in the room? Come on, come on up. If, if there's anyone else, if you'll queue up, that would, uh, be great.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, you can pull it down a little bit if you'd like to. Just, there you go. Yeah, if you get close to the microphone, we can hear you.
My name is Deborah Irvin, I-R-V-I-N, and I live at 2240 North Avenue West. And this boulevard is absurd. We cannot afford it. I, I had to pay half of years to this social security that I earned to, to do this, this horrible, unnecessary project. I already have sidewalk on both sides of my house, you know, I'm at the corner. And I just finished paying the sewer SID and the, the sidewalk SID, which is in there. Now they're telling me I have to take it out and pay all this money. I can't do that. Also, the man that was driving the motorcycle was hit. He was thrown at least 14, 15 feet. His, his helmet was crushed. The ambulance came and we were asking if they, he was gonna live and they, they said, "We cannot talk to you about that." They put him in the ambulance and they closed the door and they drove off slowly with no lights and no sirens. And I don't think that is a really good thing to have at the corner of North and Eaton. We have had accident after accident. Animals are killed. Children have to be able to run, to wait for the bus stop, to not get hit by these crazy drivers. We want a four-way stop. You can do whatever you want about the sidewalks. We do not want the expensive boulevard. And please, please, don't make, don't make us live on a corner where accident after accident, our pets are being killed. That poor guy on the motorcycle, I don't think he made it. And we have so many accidents. People are so tired of this racetrack. You've gotta help us and, and do it soon, please, before anybody else dies. Please, please help us. And also, we, we don't want to be punished for this project. We can't afford it. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Um, okay, no one's queuing up, so I'm assuming that no one else in the room has comments on the consent agenda. Um, I am going to go online. I see Todd. I'm gonna unmute you. You'll have to unmute on your end as well. Do you have comments for us, Todd? Can you speak? Todd, you should be able to unmute yourself because you've been unmuted on my end. Yeah, I don't, if you're speaking, Todd, I can't hear you. Um, yep, I, so, um, Todd, I'm gonna, uh, kind of leave you where you can try to unmute yourself. We're gonna move on in the agenda and then I'll come back to see if you have been able to unmute yourself because on our end, it looks like you are unmuted. Um, we're gonna go ahead and do a voice vote on the consent agenda minus 8.4. And then I'm gonna come back and I know council, there's some council hands up, but we're gonna dispense of the rest of the consent agenda first. So let's go ahead and do that, Justice.
Voice vote on the consent agenda minus 8.4.
That's correct.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Consent agenda passes.
Great, thanks. So, um, I'm gonna go back to Todd because I'm hoping he has figured out how to unmute himself or, uh, if there's, yeah, Todd, I, I'm sorry, you're, you're able to speak on, on my end. So I'm gonna go back. We've taken, um, I'll, I'll, I'll come back to you again if I get a chance here. Todd, we've taken, um, public comment on the consent agenda and now I'm going to go, I see a bunch of hands up, so I'm gonna go in the order that I see them on my computer, which sometimes is not how you see them on your computer. Um, Bob, go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am president. Actually, based on public comment, I do have one question of staff I'd like to ask first.
Yeah, that'd be fine. Go ahead.
Thank you. And I think this might have been covered in committee as well, but with regard to stop signs along that stretch of Eaton Street, particularly on North Avenue, was there any sort of near-term plan to address stop signs at that intersection or any other section within the Eaton Street corridor in the, in the near term?
So I, I can answer, I can answer that, Mark. Um, this is, so this is Kevin Slowarp, City Engineer for Surface Transportation. Um, uh, the Transportation Safety Committee, um, has, has discussed, um, an always stop control at Eaton and North Avenue. Um, we have gathered traff, um, traffic data, um, crash reports, uh, we've looked at site visibility. There's, um, there is, there's been nine crashes at that intersection over the past three years. And all of those crashes, um, either stem from a failure to stop at the 2A stop controlled intersection, so North Avenue was stopped at Eaton, or it's, um, it's a failure to, um, see oncoming traffic on Eaton and, and maybe it's, it's traffic on Eaton is traveling too fast. Um, but that's why those crashes are occurring. So we, we haven't fully decided at this time because we just haven't gotten back together, but we, um, the committee is meeting on, uh, next Tuesday and the, the recommendation will be to put a four-way, uh, stop controlled intersection at the intersection of Eaton and North. Um, and, and, um, add two additional stop signs to make that a four-way stop controlled intersection will, we think, resolve those, um, all those crashes and that crash trend that, that is or has occurred. Um, so that's what we are looking to do. That's what, uh, my recommendation will be. I, I will add, however, that, um, I don't, I don't want there to be a, necessarily a misnomer that, um, stop signs are actually traffic control. Traffic, um, control, um, we would like to, to slow down the speeds, um, and, and stop signs are not a way to do that. But, um, looking at this intersection and the, the crashes that have occurred over the past three years, all those could, again, I'll say could, because it's not always the case, um, but could be mitigated by a four-way stop. Um, I will add, just lastly, just, uh, an aside, that there was a, a crash that occurred at the intersection, the four-way stop controlled intersection at England Boulevard and Flynn, not in the same area town, but both of those vehicles came to a full stop at that four-way stop and still crashed into each other. But, um, that wouldn't have been an injury accident, even though it was a rollover that was slow speed. Um, so yes, we are looking to, uh, put up, uh, two additional stop signs, um, at that intersection and we will look to do that as soon as possible.
Did you have any other questions, Bob?
I don't, I don't know if any colleagues have other questions as well. Otherwise, uh, proceed to comment.
Um, we have, we have a whole list, we have a bunch of people that have questions or, or actually, let me, let me, since it is comment time, are there any other questions? Raise your hand if you have a question. Okay. Um, I don't know who was, who had a que, you, okay, I'm gonna go to, um, I'm gonna go to Kristen for a question and then I'll come ba, I'll come back up to you, Bob, for, for comments and then I'll go to you.
Thank you. I also have a comment, so if I could keep my hand in the queue, that would be really helpful.
Yeah, that's why I was having everyone raise their hands separately, but go ahead.
Thank you. Um, just adding on to that question from my colleague, um, are there plans for any other four-way stop signs along Eaton from top to bottom that are not currently there?
No, there are not.
Okay, Stacy, did you have a question?
Yes, thanks so much. Um, I think the question is for Kevin and we've heard several comments from folks who, around the associated costs with these improvements. And, um, I know that we've, in other projects, had kind of a quick rundown of all the various ways in which, um, we work with folks, uh, to alleviate the immediate burden of that. Could you walk us through all the various options that folks are able to engage with the city to basically offset and basically help, um, the options for paying for these
Um, yeah, I can start and then Mark can, can help me if I miss one or, or more. Um, so first off, we, we have a subsidy and for, um, property owners that are in one and, and two, um, family homes or, or residences, I should say, um, their, their, um, assessment is, is capped at, at $9,000. So that would be the most somebody that currently owns their home, um, that's a one and two family residence would, would pay on our, our curb and sidewalk projects, which, um, Eaton is, is one of those. Um, and then we have currently a, a funding mechanism for, um, whatever cost the property owner is, um, would, would potentially pay for and that, um, those, the, that loan program is, is over a period of eight years or 12 years or 20 years. The property owner gets to decide how they, uh, how they wanna finance that, that, um, that money over, um, that term. Um, and then there's, uh, there's a low income deferral, so people, uh, that, that have an assessment that, um, have, um, their mean property income is 80%. Um, or it's 80% of the mean income for Missoula, they can defer, uh, their assessment. Um, and then there is the high, um, assessment, so anything right now over $6,000 of assessment. So if a, um, property owner had, um, $6,500 assessment, then $500 could be deferred until they sell their home. Um, and, um, and so, uh, those are the, the current programs that, that we have out there. We've also, um, been talking with city council about, uh, lowering the amount of that high income or that, that, um, that high assessment deferral. Uh, we've been talking about lowering that to, um, $3,500 instead of the, the amount that it is right now of 6,000. And then we're also talking about allowing folks that are within 120% of AMI, um, adjusted mean income, median income to, um, to, to benefit from, um, that program also. So, uh, those, those other program, those other, um, um, uh, those other programs that we've been talking about recently, we can bring, um, those code amendments to city council fairly quickly and those things can, can apply to this Eaton Street project. Um, so, uh, yeah, we would look to do that, um, you know, fairly soon and, and, um, um, you know, as, as long as council would like us to.
I have a follow-up. Just what's the, I just wanna know what the interest rate of the loan term is.
Um, I don't know that. Mark, do you know that?
I don't think Mark's, my microphone's working.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
We can.
Okay, yeah, the, the interest rate for the assessment, you know, if they do an eight, 12, or 20-year period, is four and a half to seven and a half percent. The city will have a bond sale in 2026 and the rate will be determined at that time.
Okay, thank you. So I just, I'm gonna, I'm gonna recap, um, Troy, what you said. If, if a homeowner's median income is at 80% of AMI, they can defer the payment of any of this until the, the house is sold. Uh, they can also do that, um, for anything as it currently stands, although it may change in code as we do code changes. As it currently stands, anything over $6,000, they can do that too. Is that correct? For any amount of income, you don't have to be the 80% AMI for the deferment of anything above $6,000. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I'm restating what, what was said. Okay, are there, um, are there any other questions? Okay, Gwen has a question. Go ahead.
Um, Kevin, this is for you, I think. There was some discussion earlier of bump outs as part of the design for Eaton. There's also been a lot of discussion about the speeding on Eaton. Could you just speak to the, the thought process behind bump outs and, because my understanding is they're basically designed to help slow down traffic and the intended result that we're hoping to get from that?
Yeah, definitely. The bump, bump outs, um, will narrow the, the, the street and so, um, anytime you, you narrow the, the facility and, and the facility looks tighter to, to drive fast down, it, it should reduce speeds. Um, the bump outs are also to, um, kind of slow speeds around, uh, those corners that, um, people are, are negotiating in their vehicles. So, um, they really kind of serve a, a few different purposes. One more, uh, purpose is to, to kind of create a sense of place. Um, and then what I'll, I'll also add, um, is that, that some of these, or most of these bump outs on, on Eaton Street are, are all outs on, on Eaton Street are, are also due to the existing grades of, of properties that, that surround the, or that are adjacent to the right-of-way, and they're either elevated or they're depressed, and we, we really need to get the curb away from the, the higher or lower land, private property that, that is adjacent to these intersections in order to, to fit the sidewalk in and, and not have to have a, a retaining wall right on the backside of the, the sidewalk, and, and that, that additional bump out allows for, for that grade, and allows for those curb ramps, and, and helps with other things like drainage. So there's, there's a lot of different purposes for them, and, and I know that to some it, it might seem overdesigned, but it's really to serve quite a few purposes, as I just mentioned.
Okay. I don't see any other questions. Do you have one more question?
Yeah, sorry, I just, I'm trying to address all the questions that were brought up. There was a reference in regards to affecting the ability for resale of homes if there was a deferment taken, or, you know, one of the options, could we talk a little bit about that? I don't think the purpose is to harm the potential resale, especially given that that is, if the homeowner decides to choose it, is one of the ways to defer payment. But what does that process actually look like? And I know that's, might be outside of the scope of some of the folks in engineering, but.
Is there someone that can answer?
Maybe someone who's in the real estate business, who's sitting around the horseshoe?
I think, I think she's asking a colleague a question. Go ahead, Mike.
If your question is, would having a, a lien or a loan against a property for anything affect the resale? That would not. It would just be something that would be paid off when a property transferred. There's probably varying degrees of how much sidewalks and curbs increase the value of a property. But again, to one of the public comments that was made, that, that value would only be realized if somebody sold the property, so.
Okay, thanks. I, I have a question. Ms. Haynes, I think, asked a question about the, does it transition on her property from a street-side sidewalk to a boulevard? And can you explain maybe why that is the case?
Yeah, and her property, her neighbor to the south will have a curbed side sidewalk, and then we transitioned to boulevard in Stephanie's property. The, the neighbor to the south has planter boxes and, and a bunch of dirt, and higher, and a higher grade than, than, so it would make it difficult to do boulevard on their property. But in Stephanie's property, it's wide open, and, and we had the city right-of-way to install boulevard sidewalks.
Okay. Okay, I am going to go to council comments now, and I see, I think I've got everyone in order. Bob, you hit your hand up first for comments. Go right ahead.
Thank you, ma'am president. I appreciate Kevin's comments regards to traffic safety on Eaton, and things that are coming about to mitigate that, bump outs, as mentioned. And he's correct in, you know, his presentation of stop signs. Stop signs themselves are not a traffic calming device. I mean, we would hope people would obey the law and, you know, abide by stop signs, and the fact they have to go to zero miles per hour is in a way calming that, but it's not a physical constraint as bump outs are, or chicanes are, or speed bumps are. So I, I think what they're looking to do in terms of bump outs of the sidewalks and stop sign additions in near term makes sense there. My concern, though, is just in the design process for the Eaton Street project. I had occasion to go out there last week and survey the area myself. Good chunk of that is in, within Ward Five, in fact. I, I did have an opportunity to meet with the property owner, one of the property owners out there, and Mark from staff is good enough to come out, and I very much appreciate staff coming out there. So we just take a look firsthand. Sometimes you see something on an aerial photo, or on a plan, and you kind of have a feeling of, for what it looks like, but when you go out there and you actually see for yourself what the issue is, it all comes pretty solidified, pretty crystal clear pretty quickly. And such was the case here. In this particular case, I had concerns with the boulevarding going through a piece of property where there's a chain-link fence set back just enough for what would be a sidewalk, a sidewalk where along the curb, but in this particular case, that chain-link fence is going to have to be removed and pushed back some five, six feet into the yard. And as was just recently brought up, adjoining property to the south is going to be curb sidewalk, because the structure is so close to the sidewalk. If it was boulevarded there, the, someone had opened the front door of the house, and doing so, they could actually hit a passing bicyclist, or skateboarder, or something sort of made sense for the sidewalk to be up against the curb there. Looking across the street from this particular residence, again, because of nature of driveway there, the plan is for curb sidewalk and tie-in even directly to the south, again, curb sidewalk because of existing sidewalk at the intersection there. I understand the need overall for these improvements, but as was discussed and asked about during committee last week, I, I think my colleague, Ms. Nugent, had inquired with Jeremy, just in terms generally, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but just generally in terms of concerns about, you know, flexibility in design, or what flexibility is there, or are there ways of making modifications based on individual concerns, or there's any sort of flexibility in the system? And, and quite frankly, I, the answer to that was provided was not entirely satisfying to me. I think more could be done. I, I don't think, I, I could appreciate from a staff perspective that we can't have a free-for-all of one property or it's the next, and the next decide on how they would like their curb and sidewalk, being in relation to where boulevard or not boulevard. But in this particular instance, I'm looking everywhere in this half-block on both sides of the street, and it's all curb and sidewalk except for this one individual's property. And again, being out there and seeing with my own two eyes, to me at least, made all the difference in the world in, in terms of, you know, my feeling of there being some sort of latitude, or some sort of way of, you know, making modifications that in individual circumstances makes sense. And it, it's disappointing that, that there isn't a way of making these spot modifications to address, you know, individual concerns. So for me personally, for those reasons, I'll be voting against eight point four.
So, you know, I see a number of hands up. I, without objection, I would like to send this back to committee. I think we need more work on this, and I think that the neighbors have made that clear, and I think some of us, including myself, have some heartburn over it. So I'd like to send it back without any objections from council. I, there's hands up, so I don't know if you're, anyone online who has their hand up and is objecting, you'll just have to speak. If everyone would, if anyone else would like to make some comments around this, I guess we could do that, but I'd prefer to just send, send it back. Kristen has a question.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to clarify the timing, if we do vote to send it back to committee, what the timing would look like in revisiting this and getting it back onto the council floor, and if you know that off the top of your head.
I didn't think that went through. So I, I think we could, we could see it in committee the 4th of December? And do, do we need a, Justice, do we need a vote to send this back to committee? We don't. So is that everyone's, okay. So I, without objection, I'm going to send this back to committee. And there are hands up, but I don't think those are objections, because you're all in the room. So, okay, this is going to go back to committee. If we could send this back to Mirata's committee, we'll have to, she's not here, but we'll go ahead and send this back to Mirata's committee and get that scheduled on the 4th. That would be great. Okay? Justice, I'm assuming you got all that? Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we're going to take, I'm giving you five minutes, because we want to keep going. We're going to do a five-minute break, because I think there, well, there was a request.
Apparently Charity seems to have been on it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And he doesn't spend three months. But I don't know why.
Okay, I said five minutes. I'm getting this going, five minutes. As you all know, I am a stickler for timing and rules. Okay, okay, chatty people. If the council can come back, that would be awesome. All right? Great, appreciate that. I think we all needed a break, but I think we're ready to go back there, so. Hey, candy eaters over there, let's sit down. We're trying to get people back in line here. Okay, so we're going to go ahead, and we're going to start back up. Kristen, can? Okay, thank you. Okay, so we are going to try to finish this up here. We, so we are done with the consent agenda. We're going on to regular business, and we have one thing on committee reports. Items on the committee reports were not approved unanimously in city council committee, and the chairperson of the city council commen, uh, committee will make the recommended motion, and we'll, we will invite comments. So I'd like to start, we, we had this presentation, as I just said, in committee. We did take public comment, then we'll take public comment now, but we had a presentation. Are there any changes to that? Any new information, any change, the changes that we have? Okay, so I also, because, as I mentioned, I am not the mayor, which you all know, but she was unable to be here tonight, so she had sent a letter that she would like me to read. I'm going to go ahead and do that, and then if council has additional questions, we'll do that. Grant Keir with the Missoula Economic Partnership is here in the audience, if you have questions for him as well. So this is from the mayor's office. Dear council members, I'll add, and public, I am writing to request your approval of the city's purchase of the South Gate Crossing property. A strategic acquisition that aligns with our collective vision for Midtown Missoula. The Missoula Redevelopment Agency, MRA, has approved this purchase, which presents a significant opportunity to transform this long vacant three, 13.5 acre site into vibrant community, community-oriented development. Some key, key details. The purchase price, the agreed purchase price is $15 per square foot totaling approximately 5.9 million, below the appraised value of 16.47 per square foot as is, and $21.03 per square foot with entitlements. This favorable price reflects a generous contribution from the sellers. Due diligence. Comprehensive assessments, including environmental reviews and title examinations, confirmed no significant environmental risk and clear property boundaries, ensuring a sound investment for the city. Planned redevelopment. Acquiring this property allows the city to engage in public, in, in a public process to master plan the site. Achieving community-identified goals such as affordable housing, mixed-use commercial spaces, public parks, and enhanced transit connectivity. These initiatives are in alignment with the 2023 Midtown Missoula Master Plan. This acquisition is funded through the city's Tax Increment Financing, TIF, tool within the urban rural renewal, urban renewal district three. With your approval, we can move forward to finalize the purchase and begin the collaborative planning process with our community partners. This, this transformative project is a major goal for me and for the city's administration. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration. I regret being unable to be with you tonight. I am the keynote speaker at the Burton K Wheeler Center for Public Policy's Montana Housing Crisis Summit in Bozeman. I wish you a productive meeting. Andrea Davis, Mayor. So that is, that is from the mayor. I told her I would read that into the record and for the public. And are there any, okay. Cueing people up again here. Are there any questions from council that have come up? So Bob put his hand up first. Go ahead. Oh, your, your hand's up. Do you have a question?
I have several questions. We do them in groups of three, or?
Go ahead and do them in groups of three, and then we're going to move on to, we'll get back to you.
Thank you. Let's see, this may for Annette, or Ellen. Just generally, could you offer for the folks in the audience and online, just explain where precisely the money comes from that's being used? Just generally, could you offer for the folks and the audience and online, just explain where precisely the money comes from that's being used to purchase these parcels? The roughly $5.9 million. Where does that pool of money come from?
Annette Marchessot, project manager with the Missoula Redevelopment Agency. The funding that was approved for the purchase of this property would be tax increment financing from Urban Renewal District Number 3.
Okay, and thank you for that. Next question. In terms of the increment from URD 3, my understanding is that all properties within URD 3, when they pay their taxes each year, there's an amount, an increment, if you will, that comes from the taxes they pay to go into URD 3 that provides its funding. Is that correct?
So the way that tax increment financing works is when a district is established, a base tax is established for the base year. Every subsequent year, the taxes up to that base go into the general fund. Any increment above that base goes into the tax increment district.
And that's for every property that exists within URD 3?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that.
Ellen may be able to finesse that a little bit further.
Ellen Buchanan, Director of the Missoula Redevelopment Agency. The monies that constitute the tax increment are dollars that are generated because someone has either made an investment in their property, built a new building, added on to a building, or just regular appreciation. When the tax bills go out, the way the county chooses to show the increment is they spread it proportionally over everybody's tax bill in the district. But we have demonstrated by showing a house inside an urban renewal district, and I think the example that we had was either District 2 or 3, probably 3, and another almost identical property outside of the district in the same neighborhood, and one has that increment on their tax bills, but their tax bill is the same. Roughly the same. So nobody is paying more taxes because they're in an urban renewal district, unless they have made an investment in their property or built a new building. And the bulk of the taxes come from commercial developments that are new developments within the urban renewal districts.
Okay, and then, third question.
Go ahead.
So Ellen, I just want to reference a recent media report that came out last week regarding, I think something you were just recently made aware of as far as attempt to purchase a property within the URD from one property owner. The piece of property that has been sold, I believe, by Lambros or South Gate Partners. I'm just wondering how it is, given knowledge of this attempt to purchase now, a transfer like this within URD from a property owner who's a predominant property owner within that URD, just how did it not show up on MRA's radar?
I'm not sure what you're referring to. Is this the article that was in the Missoulian that referenced a business that was trying to buy property in this?
Correct.
We had absolutely no knowledge of that. We have had a purchase agreement with the sellers on this property for months. Now, and so I don't know how to answer your question, but until I was contacted by the reporter for the Missoulian, I had no... None of us had any idea that there was an effort to purchase any of that property from South Gate Mall Associates.
I could defer further questions if you want to go around some more.
Why don't we just wait? Did you have information on what was just asked?
I just want to maybe speak to that question, because I think it's important to get something out in the public. Working in this industry, if there's an offer from one private party to another private party to purchase land, the government would have no knowledge of that. It wouldn't be their business unless somebody shared it publicly. So I think it's just important that it not be implied that the city somehow would have or should have even known that, unless one of the private parties disclosed it. So I just want to add that.
Okay. Whoops, Gwen, go ahead.
And this was in my committee, so when you want a motion, let me know.
I think you can go ahead and put a motion on the floor, because we'll still ask questions and we'll get to the public comment that way as well.
So for now, I'll put the motion on the floor, and then I do have some questions. The recommended motion is to accept ownership of a property being referred to as South Gate Crossing, located south and west of 3015 Paxton Street, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents to satisfactorily execute the purchase. So that's the motion.
Okay, now there's a motion on the floor, so I need to take public comment. So do you... Can you wait to ask your question?
Well, just a point of order. Let me just say something. I have a bunch of questions based on some phone calls and emails I've had over the last, since last Wednesday, that I think will address a lot of the public comment. And if we can go through those questions first, I don't think we're necessarily...
Okay, okay. Since I forced you into making the motion quickly, that's fine. Why don't you do three questions? So think about them strategically. Then we're going to go to public comment, and then we're going to come back to questions, because I only see you and Bob having your hands up. So go ahead and do your three questions, and then we'll go to public comment.
Okay, great. Yeah, my hope is that by asking some of these questions and getting answers, it helps fine-tune more public comment in case there are other questions. So first of all, there has been a lot of discussion about the fact that folks in this area have used this vacant lot as a park, basically, for walking, and there's a ditch that goes through it. So Annette, I'm hoping you can address the fact that there is a ditch going through this property dictates some of the use, first of all, with this property, and also, in general, with a master planning process, how the topic of a park, and possibly including the ditch, would be envisioned. Knowing we don't know all of the details yet, but in general, I think you already have a lot of thoughts on this.
Sure. Annette Marchessot, project manager with MRA. There is an irrigation ditch that runs through this property. It used to go a little bit more diagonally than it does now. Now it kind of makes a couple of right-angle turns, probably in response to the sawmill activities historically on that property. The irrigate... Most people in Montana know that irrigation rights supersede lots of other rights. So we would not have the right to realign that ditch. But I think it's clear that that ditch is an amenity on that site, and the intention would not be to completely cover that ditch. It runs through, on an easement through the property. It's a variable width, somewhere between 15 and 15 feet easement. And nothing... No buildings can be constructed within that easement, and that goes across the entire property. There are some circumstances where you might need to put roads across, in which case you would have to put a culvert or a bridge or some structure like that. But no buildings would occur within that easement.
Thanks.
Is that helpful?
Yeah, and just stay up here. Okay. And if the city purchases this property and a master plan is done, and ultimately it is developed based on all signals in terms of master plans and land use plan documents, there would be more density. My understanding is also contemplated there would be some level of green space, parkland, using the ditch. So there is... This would not just be completely built and paved over, but some level of park for engagement with that neighborhood and with the new development.
Yes. The simple answer is yes. If the city purchases this property, the city has a great deal of influence over how this property develops. And the city will not sign a development agreement with a developer who is not in alignment with the goals of the city. There will be a public park somewhere in this development. The intention is to conduct a very ambitious public engagement process, in particular with the neighborhood. We've heard several times that the open space in this area is cherished, and appreciate that, and recognize that this part of the city is deficient in open space and park space. So knowing that, the city will not sign a development agreement with the developer unless a park, a public park, not a private park, a public park is included as part of the development. And we would expect that the, at least the conceptual development, would be developed through a public process with the neighborhood.
And so I'll just do one more question, and then I've got a bunch more questions for next rotation through. So, and that brings me to... There's kind of two tracks forward with this piece of property. Either it's in completely private ownership, and someone buys it and develops it. Whether or not they put infrastructure in, who knows? Maybe there's just storage units put in because there's no infrastructure in there. Or the city buys it, and that's a different track. With those two tracks, what's the level of city involvement to steer the development there? Because they're really two very different processes.
So if the property remains... So if the city, as I said, if the city purchases the property, the city has a great deal of influence on how that property develops with regard to choosing whether we would sign a development agreement with a developer that's aligned with the goals or not. If the property remains in private ownership, the private owners can develop the property as by right under zoning, under subdivision, so laws that are on the books today. But the city would have very little influence beyond that.
Okay, thanks. Just hold the resume.
Thanks, appreciate that. So I'm going to go to public comment now. And if you have public comment, please come on up, state your name for the record. You have three minutes. I hold everyone to that, to be fair across the board. Yeah, come on up, yeah. And if you'll spell your last name, that'd be great.
Hi, yeah, my name is Kathy Scrivner, S-C-R-I-B as in boy, N-E-R. Kathy. I'm so glad to hear this, in terms of the city's commitment to the open space and keeping a park where we are. I just give you a little bit of a flavor of what we're talking about, where we live. So I'm a neighbor. Some of our neighbors are here in that area. And, you know, when I first moved to the area, I saw, you know, kind of the railroad track in this big, what looked like hardscrabble land. That didn't... I didn't really have a connection to it, and I can imagine that's what people will see. Wow, great, there's this opportunity for development. And as maybe some of us know, there's a difference between space and place. Space is often kind of implies like a blank slate without much relationship to a piece of land. Place implies connectedness and some sort of established relationship. So as people have said, we don't have a lot of space down in our end of town, and it is a very cherished part of our daily being, really, there. Many of us do walk our dogs on the easement. We take care of that land. We clean it up. We keep an eye on people. You know, and actually, I would just say, as a nearly two-decades-long hospital and hospice chaplain, I spend a lot of time providing support and presence to any number of people who walk through there and stay there, who are potentially unhoused or housed. And I would say I've had some of the most profound conversations of my entire life with people who are staying there, who are already feeling exiled in this city, and come there, I think, as a place that feels safe, when they don't feel safe in our shelters and on the easement. And I'm not going to go into the complexity of being unhoused and homelessness in Missoula. It is all through our country. It's a very complex issue. But I will say, what we don't hear are the beautiful things that happen in places like the little spot behind Bob Ward's. Some really beautiful, organic community has grown up from nothing there. People self-regulate. They go there to talk. I've seen veterans gather there to pray, to be together, to just share stories. And not just the human element, but it's a place where deer and fox and raptors, we've seen great herons, trees. I mean, it's just a really beautiful little tucked-in place, and that's why I think people are drawn to it. Oh, am I already up? Is it just going off? But I just want... I want to just put a plug in, because I think Missoula is an extraordinary place.
If you can just finish up. The time is off. I don't know why this is not letting... So it has been three minutes.
It's been three, I'm still talking.
Yeah, if you want to finish your sentence, that's fine.
I just see an opportunity for a really cool sort of interpretive greenway in there. If we could put in some sort of, like, history of the land. It used to be a land, you know, the place where people picked bitter root. It's been a sawmill. It's been where community has developed. And, you know, do something really unique with this opportunity that's community-driven. So thanks.
Thank you for your comments. This timer scares me every time it goes off. Is... Are there any other comments?
Hi, my name is Karen Oberg, O-B-E-R-G. And I own a commercial building on the corner of Dixon and Schelling, and a small business. And I have used TIF money. So I just... I'm here just because I want to be supportive of the development, but also just have the input needed for traffic connectivity to that, for that, through that intersection. It is a place where a lot of people park on the street. You can only get one car through right now. We did the bulb out on the corners where our building is. So I just want to be a part of that discussion. I also love the neighborhood, and it's really grown on me. I didn't move there because I was living there. But I am there because I have a business, and there are more business owners moving into our building. So my other comment I would just like to say is, I am concerned. I do know how much housing is needed in our community, but I would like to encourage more mixed housing. I have friends who live or lived in the Villagio, and the trauma of the sounds, the police, the drugs, the needles, the feces, the naked people, has been disturbing. So I think research, from my understanding, has shown that mixed housing is much more beneficial for everybody and a safer place to live. So I would just like to encourage that. Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate your comments. Are there any other comments in the room? If you want to come on up, that'd be great.
Hello, my name is Gail Leonard, L-E-O-N-A-R-D. I am a longtime resident of this area that we're talking about. I would like to have you guys be able to have green space for my neighborhood. I think this space, this open space, it brings people together, our community. I've met most, all of my neighbors in my neighborhood. We've came together with, you know, some of the crises that we've had in our neighborhood, like with the homeless problems. I'm sure you recognize my name. We've had many conversations, Amber. But I would like for you guys, when you do take this into consideration, take in consideration for the people that have lived in this neighborhood for 30 years, and make sure that we have, that we're not going to have big skyscrapers and, you know, overpopulation, that we have our green space and park space. Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate your comments. Okay, come on up.
Hello, my name is Carrie Schreiber, C-A-R-R-I-E-S-H-R-E-I-B-E-R, and I've been really busy since the 10 Days of this winter committee. I'm really glad that we have Veterans Day to have a little bit more time to get some community discussions, so people could have a voice here. Otherwise, this would have been approved last Monday. Everything that was said in the first presentation about open space applies to this land. We are critically underserved in open space, where there are barriers to get to other open space with Brooks and Reserve. And there is a gigantic equity component of this neighborhood that's been in U R D for 20 years and still doesn't have a park, even after Mary Street came through and took away the organic park space. Also stated earlier, the urban space plan, urban, urban open land plan is a priority for the city as well as housing. The climate benefits and resilience of keeping the trees and the green space, also the health benefits for the public, the 10-minute walk goal, the aesthetic, recreational, and historical importance of the property, that is all same to this. And I would ask that before this is turned over to a developer, that Parks Direct takes a look at the space for more than just what the developer is going to offer us in a park. I think that we kind of get first dibs, since there are no other parks and there's no room to create other parks in this constrained amount of space. We really want to keep that buffer on the Schelling side towards the development with our vegetation. We have individually done improvements on our properties, and it's looking good, that we're working really well together, and a big increase in traffic, like we talked about before, is a safety risk for the daycare of 70 kids, as well as children that might be served at Karen's building. There was a skate park that the community made years ago, and that's closer to the railroad and closer to the Mary Crossing. And the old, I don't know if anybody got emails about that, I encouraged folks that were part of that project to speak. But a professional builder worked with the kids, and they had to work on the project in order to be able to skate there, and it was a great gathering place for quite a while for those kids, and it was taken down right around COVID time. And the last picture I have of it has painted on it, "Love always remains." And this has been an important area to a lot of people, as, as Kath was saying. And you can see the trails, even on aerial pictures, of how much it is used, and a lot of that is through the easement that the city already has. So I would just ask that we, we look at parks first, then development. There's great development opportunity at Dixon and Eden for connectivity.
Great, thank you, I appreciate that. Come on up.
Excuse me, my name is Bob Moore, M-O-O-R-E. I'll start off by just stating that I am totally 1,000% against this purchase. Y'all don't even want us to know what the purchase is. The purchase price is not in this agenda anywhere, nowhere. One of our prior mayors told me how much money the city was going to make on the Sleepy Inn. Sleepy Inn is still sitting there. I doubt if you've gotten any money off of it, regardless of what somebody said. Bob asked, where did the money come from? The answer was Ur 3 or 2, whatever their number was. Where did it really come from? The money came from the taxpayers of Missoula, no other place, no matter how they shove it or try to explain it or whatever, the money to purchase that property is coming from the taxpayers. Did y'all see the letter a couple of weeks ago to the, to the paper, where the lady was objecting to her taxes paying 66, 66,000 to the, I don't know, one of those Starbucks stores? Where did that money come from? Did it come from Ur 3 or whichever Ur that is? You're being ripped off by MRA and all but 2 or 3 of the city council to give them more That's the reason you're selling, trying to buy this property. Whoever the owner is, and I don't know who the owner is, they get to sell the property because nobody else would do it. Same excuse on Sleepy Inn. Nobody's, nobody's bought the property. Mayor told me, oh no, Bob, we're going to make a fortune on that property when they get through using it. Somebody other than me ought to learn what is going on with MRA and what they're doing with the money. To say nothing of the fact that at some point you're going to go bankrupt, but taking all this money and spending it for God knows what. What it is, is in the pockets of owners and developers in Missoula. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The, the amount is listed under the financial implications in the referral online, if people would like to refer to that. Go ahead.
Carl McKee. If the letter from the mayor is correct, how can you not pass up this fine piece of property that's an investment of return so many ways? Let's thank the seller. Let's get to realizing in Missoula, there's some envious, greedy developers that's going to be envious of the city. You can send a middle finger to those greedy developers, and let's acquire this property because it's an investment to the fine city of Missoula in this circumstances. For somebody that doesn't realize that, he doesn't, what is that, a six-by-what-foot piece of property already purchased that should be utilized more appropriately?
Thank you. Are there any other public comment, look online? I don't see any, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna come back to council. Bob and Gwen have already had questions. So I see Stacy and Mike, you have your hands up. Do you guys have questions or you have comments? Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna stick with questions and then go to comments after. So Mike, I'm gonna let you go, and then I'll go back to you, Bob.
Thanks. My questions are for Ellen, if you would like to step right up to the microphone. Thanks for coming.
Thanks for having me.
I appreciate all the public comment. I actually think that everybody who gave public comments, save one, all is in favor of this, and I'm gonna get to why. But there were some references to easements in this conversation, so I want to clarify some stuff about this property. My understanding is the only easement that the city has on these parcels is where roads could potentially be in a grid? Is that accurate, or would you kind of expand on that?
There are platted right-ofways and alleys for streets and alleys on this property. They've never been developed, they exist on paper, and those are the city's property. The easement belongs to the ditch company.
To the ditch company. So in the platted right-ofway, the alleys and the streets, I mean, if, if the city did not purchase this and the private landowners decided to develop it according to what's there now, the, what people have referred to as easements that they're walking their dogs on are really roads and alleys that could be paved, they're not a park.
That's correct.
So, I guess I only had two questions.
Well, I mean, just a comment, if the city owns this property, we can control whether or not there's open space or park there. If this, if the two property owners of these, this acreage were to just sell this outright to a private developer, the city could not require necessarily that there be a park included in this unless they wanted tax increment funding to build the streets and utilities. That'd be the only real leverage we have, other than, than zoning and if subdivision comes into play, but it's already subdivided. So the city controlling this gives us the leverage to do what the neighborhood wants.
So the, the best way for us to protect park space or to create dedicated park space for this neighborhood is to go through with this purchase?
That's my opinion. And the, and the other piece of this is that there's enough acreage here that as we try to address the housing needs of the city, we can do mixed housing, we can do missing-middle housing, which is townhomes and quadruplexes and duplexes and eightplexes. We can also do three and four and five-story apartment buildings. But you can have, you can create an entire neighborhood there with different scale buildings, different types of housing, that address different income groups.
Thank you.
She, she is actually an employee of the city, so she's staff, so she can speak as long as, she is staff, she is staff, she's an expert, and she's with MRA. So that was not a public comment, it was a staff comment. Okay, so thank you for that. We're gonna go, Bob, I'm gonna give you three questions, if you have that many, and then we're gonna go to the rest of the questions.
Thank you, appreciate that. Next three questions. So probably an Ellen-type question as well. So looking forward, should this be approved? One thing I noticed in the appraisal report or reports is the need for mediation, there's a cost in there somewhere out the door, around $900,000, I understand it. Is that $900,000 including the purchase price, or is that going to be an additional cost should the city go through?
Counsel, I think what you're referring to is the area that has some fairly deep wood waste behind Bobboards. That's not an environmental issue, it's a geotechnical issue. So it really depends on what we do with that property. There are things that can go there that would not require any of the removal of that wood waste. It's not contaminated, it's, it's been tested, it's clean. So, you know, there, if you don't want to build a building there, but there are other uses that can go there, you wouldn't have to even bother with removal. If you want to put a building there, in all likelihood, you're gonna have to remove it, and you're gonna have to come back with compacted soil.
Okay. And in that worst-case scenario, there would be this cost then additionally? Thank you. The other question I had regards to, going forward, should this be approved, onsite improvements in order to, you know, we've had conversations about enticing development, or private developer come in to master plan the area for parks for multi-commercial, for multi-use residential, possibly affordable housing, and maybe workforce housing possibly, I don't know. But I'm with a mind toward what we've done at Rivera this past year, we've ended up bonding in excess of $9 million up there. Can you give an estimate of, you know, going forward, what those costs would be to the city for any sort of onsite improvements that we would begin to do to get a developer to come in and work with us and, you know, put something forward? How much city involvement would there be financially going forward?
You know, I think that, that's a good question. I think that it really depends on the nature of the development. We've done, MRA has participated in two planning efforts around this piece of property in the 20 years that I've been here. There's a street layout that's a part of the most recent one that was done, which was done in 2016 or '14, somewhere around that time, around the time we built Mary Avenue. I think the estimates are, if we were to pay for all of the streets and utilities based on that particular configuration, it's somewhere around $5 or $6 million. I don't know that that's what we would build. Once again, we, you know, we would look to a very public process, that hasn't taken place yet. We would need to know what potential developer or developers want to do there and what they can afford to do there. So that's a hard question to answer. I don't think that we would be investing to the same degree that we have at Rivera. That was a pretty special circumstance, and it's, yeah, I, it's just really hard to answer that question with any specificity.
Fair enough. And would you say, with any such investment of that magnitude, would we have then go down the road of bonding, or is there enough wherewithal within remain balance to U R D?
Well, we have enough, we have adequate revenue in the district to purchase this property with cash, so we are not proposing to bond for the purchase. Depending on when the, the infrastructure went in and how it was phased in, we might have cash, we might have to bond.
Okay, I think I'm moving on to Gwen. Gwen, go ahead, and same thing for you, three questions, and then we're just, people can start queuing up for comments as well.
Great. So to just follow up with the environmental issues a little bit, Annette, Bob covered that. I know there was a neighbor that was concerned about the environmental issues, and I will say, there's a lot of documents, and if anybody wants to reach out, we can provide those documents. I read through a lot of them this afternoon. My understanding is, having read through the reports, the consultants looked at a lot of aerial photos for decades and decades to see what uses had been on that property, and then did a bunch of testing in certain areas, covering the whole place, but focusing more on other areas. And what they found was, there's wood chips, but there, there were not, with the testing they did, as they drilled down, they found wood chips, but not toxic chemicals, like, I mean, if we look at the White Pine Sash Park that we discussed earlier tonight over on the north side, that had a lot going on environmentally. But these are basically wood chips, and so if one is going to build a foundation, you do have to dig that out and make sure you have a solid foundation, but not necessarily everywhere. Is that, I just want to make sure that we have a clear message on the environmental assessment.
That's correct. The only item that the environmental Phase 2, so Phase 1 is a record search, and the record search came out clean, the environmental consultants didn't require a Phase 2 exploration. MRA felt that to do due diligence and to really investigate this investment for the city, we requested a Phase 2. The only item that was determined to have some concern was these wood, wood fill in wood chips, sawdust, I'm not sure of the nature, it's, it's leftover from the sawmill. Investigated, there is no environmental hazard. They even investigated for methane, because sometimes buried organic matter can have methane concerns, and that does not seem to be a concern. So yes, as Ellen explained, if the, if there were a building located in that area, we would need to excavate, or whoever's building the building would need to excavate and bring in clean fill. If there's another use for that area that doesn't include a building, there wouldn't be any need to take that out.
Right, thanks. In general, it was a pretty good report, considering what these can come back with. That's not a question, that's a statement. I've got two more. Okay. Second question, I just want you to describe the public participation process that you're envisioning. I think that's a big part of what we're hearing, is folks just want to be able to be part of that. And in general, when do you think it will start, and what will it look like? And knowing that, you know, people aren't always going to get everything they want, but it's a collaborative process, and their voices are very important on this. So if you can describe what that'll look like, and then I have one final question for you.
I, I can't say, I can't just map it out right now, because some of it will depend on who... I can't say, I can't just map it out right now because some of it will depend on who, who the developer is. For instance, in the Rivera property, which I understand was a very successful public engagement process, in that circumstance, a developer was identified who had goals and strategies that were in alignment with the city. The developer came on board and actually managed the public engagement process with the city at the table. So they hired the consultants who managed the public engagement process rather than the city doing that. We don't know if that is going to happen here or not. But what we, but regardless, we will not bring on a developer who is not committed to a public process, either if the city, and some developers may say, you know what, why don't you do the public process and then we'll come on board? Other developers may say, we want to be at the table with the neighborhood as this is occurring. So I can't lay that out specifically. Regardless, the city will be at the table during the public process. And I've gone through a couple of public processes where neighborhood involvement was really instrumental in how development occurred. I'll just use an example, M R L Park, I was involved in the public, and that's a smaller piece, but the public involvement in that process. A lot of folks in the neighborhood, we were hearing, before we started the process, we were hearing that there was a real desire for a dog park. And there was a sentiment that, wow, that's a lot of open space that could be used for something else if it's just a dog park, I mean, who's gonna? But then as we went through the process, the neighbors were adamant, every single small group that did its concept design had a dog park in it. And of course, a dog park was included. And as the dog park opened or as the whole park opened, we were hearing stories that neighbors were meeting each other for the first time in this dog park. And it, for me, it was just a recognition that having the neighborhood involved in the process at the beginning is affirmation of getting a design that works for the neighbors. The development process, we have to have the developer somehow involved because developers have to, they have to at least break even or make money on their development. So they have, so they, we have to have some truth, some, you know, reality checks with the dreaming, the conceptual dreaming that is occurring. So I don't know if that's a good enough answer, but that's as definitive as I think we can be at this point.
So, third question. So it'll, I'm anticipating 2025 will be the planning process, hopefully. And I'm wondering if you can put your email on a screen so that folks can write your email down to get in the loop for communication since folks are here and.
Yes, I can do that.
You'll have started that database of folks who want, want to get an email trigger, you know, get notice of when this planning process is starting, if you could do that.
Sure. Following the committee meeting, we did, Councilmember Nugent and I did meet with some neighbors last Friday and we have, I have started a list of names and contact information for people. I'd be happy to, while you are taking other questions or comments, I'd be happy to put my contact information, both me and Ellen.
That'd be great if that's okay with the chair.
Yeah, that's, that's great. I just have a question. I know when we had done a press conference on this and I think it was Scott Burke was talking about how long, I think this is really interesting when we look at some of these tax increment financing projects. He was talking about how many, the TIF investment and how many years it took for the taxes that he was then paying back to the city to pay that back. And then, of course, every year it's more and more and more that that's going into the city because part of, well, a big part of what we're doing when we are doing economic development and when we are investing MRA funds is building the tax base that's going to allow the city to do all sorts of things and allow MRA to do all sorts of things, right? So, I mean, do you have any, any idea of how, I guess, if this is built out in the way that we're hoping and we have this investment of under, under $6 million? I mean, at the height of what this could be with park land and things like that, I mean, do you have any kind of wild guess on how many years we're talking about until that's paid back in the taxes that these, I know I'm asking you, give me an example someplace in town that we've done that?
I'm going to bump this one to Ellen.
Okay. No, no one was, I mean, I just, I, maybe no one can give me an exact, but I think that's an important part of this conversation, that this money is being paid back so many times over as, as the projects are built out. And we don't really, we don't talk about that a lot, I don't think, so.
Well, I will say, I'm very hesitant to give any sort of specifics, but what I will say, this land has been vacant for 40 some years. It pays taxes, but not very much. And improvements pay more taxes. That's, you know, I can't give definitive, we don't know exactly what the development will be, but we expect that there will be commercial, there are probably some employment centers, certainly housing. We know that all of those improvements will pay more taxes than vacant land does.
Macy Hotel was paying 10, some, 10,000, 15,000 a year and then it was redeveloped and it was 250,000 a year or something in taxes. I mean, this approximately, so I mean, this is kind of the, the type of increment and the building of a tax base that we're getting. I mean, that's, that's my best example, because I heard that at one point. Okay. I am going to, sorry to put you on the spot there because I know that we can't really predict the future in that way. Dale has his hand up.
Dale Pickle, Chief Administrative Officer. One thing I wanted to say that, that might help along these lines is when, oftentimes when the MRA Board is considering projects, they use a thumb rule that they expect 10 times the private investment related to the actual increment investment. And even though this is a land purchase, I would expect that with the size of this parcel and even with additional potential infrastructure investments, that that, that type of ratio would hold true in this when, with the size and the new development comes in.
I appreciate you, Wayne, and I asked a very difficult circuitous question. I have a very, I'm going to go to, I know you have more questions. How many more questions do you have?
Two, maybe three.
Okay, great. I'm going to make my quick comment, then I'm going to let Stacy make a comment and then I'm going to, Sierra make a comment, then I'm going to go back for your questions and you can do your questions and your comments. I appreciate you doing them in blocks like that. My comment's going to be very fast because I think that we have the opportunity to control a critical piece of property in the heart of Missoula for the good of Missoula and for the good of the neighborhood, you know, that's being sold to us under market value that could be who knows what without us being able to control it and do things good for that neighborhood. I mean, if we don't control it, we do not know what would be built there. So it's building the tax base, it's going to be a really good thing for that neighborhood. I plan on voting for it. I feel like this investment is a bit of a no-brainer in, in trying to control this piece of property and make it a good thing for the community. So I plan on voting for it. And Stacy?
I will also be super quick. I also will be voting in favor. I think that we, the public comments we heard were about the need for open space, housing, traffic, mixed housing, green space, keeping the neighborhood together. And the only way that we can guarantee any of that is by the city owning this and then being an intentional partner and doing intentional development that sort of weaves in the priorities which we have as a city, which are open space, a mixed use of housing and creating an intentional neighborhood. And if we don't buy this, there's no guarantee of what this is going to be. This is where we, you know, we are fortunate to have MRA and to have funds in these U R Ds to seize this type of opportunity, to basically, you know, it's, it's, once you build it, you can't unbuild it. So this is an opportunity to have raw land in the middle of town to be able to do something that really is reflective of what the neighbors want, what the city's needs are and be very intentional about it. So it is, it is a unique opportunity that I think we would be very remiss not to take advantage of so that we can weave in these things and more as we continue to get more public engagement. But I know that, you know, from my time on council, open space, intentionality, equity, housing are all things that are in our lenses and that we will be able to partner with someone who also shares that vision and intentionality because we own the land. So I'll be in support. Thanks.
Thanks, Sierra. And then I'll go to Bob for your remaining questions and your comments.
Thank you. I'll also be quick. I'm also in favor of this and for a lot of the reasons that my colleagues have said, but one of the other reasons that I'm in favor is a lot of times on council, some of the frustrations we have is that we, we end up having to be really reactionary and we can't be proactive. We, we have to be sort of, we just have to react to what's happening in front of us. And this is one of the rare times that we get to be really proactive and we get to make decisions on what's going to happen on that block. And we hear a lot of frustration from folks who feel like we don't bring infrastructure until well after it's needed. And this is a time when we can bring the infrastructure in before it's too late. And I think that that's a really big piece of why I'm in favor of it. The other piece I just want to point out is, I think it's just a really smart investment. I mean, when you look at the appraisal, it appraises well over the asking price. So we're paying a little over 5.9 million in the appraisal, depending on the circumstances, between 6.5 million and 8.3 million. So to me, that's just really smart business. So I am in favor for those reasons.
Thanks for your comments. Go ahead, Bob.
Thank you, Madam President. Just two more questions. I just wondered if, if it comes to pass that we need to bond for any site improvements or what have you, what effect does that have on the I U R D sunset, if any?
Urban Renewal District 3 is already in what I would call the countdown period. It's going to sunset in 2040, no matter what we do. So we won't be able to do a 25-year bond, depending on when we, every year, one year ticks off of the length of the bond. Depending on when we did it, that would determine the term.
Interesting. Thank you for that. And then, I don't know if this might be a Dale question or who exactly, but reading the appraisals, the two that were put out, repeatedly it makes reference to terms of extraordinary assumptions and hypothetical conditions. I don't know if anyone could maybe explain that. As I read through it here, it says extraordinary assumption is assignment specific, as effective day of appraisal and if found to be false, could alter the opinion or conclusions contained in the appraisal. And the right is reserved to amend the appraisal if assumptions are proved to be false. And there's a few assumptions that are made, one dealing with valuing the property as one tract of land combining all 13 sites, other having to do with remediation for development that, that the cost for that is accurate, reflect current costs. Anyone enlighten me?
I can try and speak to that. That's standard appraisal jargon from the appraiser community. It's just, those are the assumptions that the appraisal is based on. Just because it uses the word extraordinary doesn't actually mean that there's some sort of unusual thing happening here. That's contained in every, every appraisal. It's not just a residential structure, something that's really straightforward and simple. We see that really regularly with respect to both Parks, Kesh and Lou appraisals and appraisals of property that the city has an interest in one way or another. So that's just kind of their standard wiggle language that they put in there to, so that nobody can hold them accountable for what they, what they say. I'll stop there before I get in trouble.
That's probably a good idea.
Thank you for that. So comments?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Okay, I have some comments I wrote down here, but first, just one quick point. Mr. Moore is correct. There's nothing written agenda and nothing even in the motion that mentions the $5 million that we're contemplating spending here tonight. Transparency is a very easy thing to handle in situations like this and I don't understand how time and time again we mess up the simple stuff like that. So be it as it may. General comments. Almost two weeks ago in committee, I voted against this land purchase so it could be discussed more thoroughly during a regular council meeting, not simply rubber stamped on consent agenda. I have several misgivings about this purchase. The city has its sites on this property for several years. Its importance was amended by adoption of the Midtown Master Plan just last June of 2023. Remember that date? From tonight's referral with respect to the South Gate Crossing property, the Urban Land Institute stated, "This is where the panel believes the most intense development in Midtown Missoula should occur. I can appreciate the ambition behind the land purchase such as this, a development anchor for Midtown Master Plan, including a whole host of different land types and amenities, and a promise of some yet-to-be-determined affordable housing options at the cost to the city yet to be determined. How many millions will the city have to bond to provide the right improvements and incentives to make this project a reality? I feel like I have to sign a blank check using future TIF dollars, i.e. public money, to find out how this would all unfold. Additionally, the city's chronic addiction to land banking only dries up the cost of available land to other developers, thus exacerbating the housing crisis that we are in. These concerns, however, pale in comparison to the issue of which I'm about to speak. I've often heard that redevelopment is a necessary tool in the toolbox. Some cases, it's where there's an opportunity for partnering with developers for creating affordable housing, as is the case with Rivera up on Scott Street. I voted for that final funding. So much work has been accomplished there prior to my time on council, I feel we should go forward and see how it works out and see if we could deliver on affordable housing that's, that's promised and come to fruition. In other instances, I've been told MRA should be involved in purchasing private land, particularly in areas where the free market isn't moving forward on its own, creating stagnation and blight. Problem is, for tonight's proposed purchase, this isn't at all the case. In July 23, one month after that master plan adoption, there was a private business attempting to purchase several parcels, including this proposal, located immediately to the south of Bob Ward's Strip. This business has been Missoula for several decades and employs 20 people with good-paying jobs. I had occasion to sit down and speak with the business owner just a few days ago. According to him, there was a bicycle agreement that would transfer several of these parcels to the business so they could expand. The proposed agreement settled on purchasing price for these parcels at $12 per square foot. This was in June of 2023. The business also agreed a part of this proposal to maintain the included access easement. That's accompanying those parcels so any future north-south corridor could be built. It's also important to note, much of the wood fill mentioned in the city's appraisal reports is within lots this business was attempting to purchase and would have, therefore, have to deal with. I learned that the property owner, the seller, backed out of this agreement in December of 2023, claiming there would instead be reopening negotiations with a previously interested party. This is important. There would be reopening negotiations with a previously interested party. The business owner was not told who this interested party was, but given the timeline, the due diligence reports are attached to this report, the amount of time that the city has been working to consolidate this land, the city's interest in the property, one doesn't have to be a detective to ascertain who this other interested party is. And now, as we see here tonight, the city is about to purchase all these parcels, including those involved with the attempted private business transaction, all for the discount of $15 per square foot. So let's call this proposal just what it is, flat out. The city is outbid a private company for land using public money to do so. In my estimation, the use of land envisioned by this business just didn't fit the plan of what it is the city wants. Even worse, consider that the money used to purchase this private property comes from the increment of those paying taxes within this U R D. So happens, this private business I mentioned happens to be part of this U I D. So to put it another way, a portion of this business's tax dollars remitted annually for over 20 years. years that the business has been part of this U R D is gonna be used against them to outbid for the parcel property that is attempted to purchase just a year ago. This is completely unacceptable. Yet sadly, just the last example of the city interfering in the free market at expense of a taxpayer. If you own a business in U R D anywhere in this city, this purchase, if approved, should give you pause as to whether you can compete with an almost endless tax dollar stream being stacked against you if you want to expand your business or otherwise privately purchased land within the U R D. Indeed, it's completely unethical to any kind of a economic partnership. Given everything I just laid out, I'll be voting tonight. I'll be voting to support our longtime businesses and the good-paying jobs they sustain and retirelessly to expand. If only government could get out of the way, that means I'll be voting no to this.
Okay, Mike, go ahead.
I think that it's important to note that it takes two parties to reach an agreement. And, I mean, everybody knows that I work in the real estate world and I'm, I'm familiar with a lot of this. The party that you referenced, Mr. Campbell, reached out to me in March or whenever this first came forward to the MRA, which was a public meeting and there was a news story and, and things of that nature. And at that time, I referred them to the Missoula Economic Partnership to discuss potentially still purchasing that part, they could still be a part of it. I know that the Missoula Economic Partnership attempted to reach out to them and they did not return the phone calls. That same entity reached out to me again last week, and I again referred them to the Missoula Economic Partnership and gave them the phone number and called the Missoula Partnership and kind of let them know to be expecting that phone call, because contrary to everything you just said, that could potentially still be part of this, that isn't necessarily written off. And I think that it's probably really overly simplistic to suggest that somehow the city swooped in and took over something that they didn't necessarily know about. What happened, I have no doubt, is that the private party, the other side of that transaction, decided, instead of just trying to sell a couple parcels, they went and they reached out to the other parcel owner in this, because those, that offer was not for the entire 13 acres, and they said, "This is probably the last chance to follow the master plan." And that private party did what they thought was best for the land that they owned. So, if you want to advocate for private property rights, you probably gotta advocate on both sides. And I just think that that's important, instead of throwing around accusations like the city's jumping in and negotiating against people, I think that we need to paint a bigger picture, because that narrative goes out there, and I just think that we have to be careful about that. I also think that when people reference things like the sleepy inn and things like that, one of the biggest criticisms that people had against the sleepy inn purchase, and I actually agreed with this, was that instead of doing an appraisal, they just got a broker's price opinion. So, in this case, and in many purchases since then, the city has utilized appraisers. They are licensed by the state, they follow specific report guidelines, and I think that if we can't trust the opinion of value of an appraiser, I don't know who else we would trust in this world. I think that there are, there's lots of language, I, I call it CYA language in appraisals, but they basically outline the things that they can't speak to and say, you know, we assume, we're making an assumption that this is normal, but we can't otherwise speak to it. I, like I said, I still believe that that small business could be part of this. I have told them who to reach out to. It's frustrating to me that, that, to hear that they haven't. I checked in again tonight. I, I appreciate that you sat down with them, but I do think that there's a bigger picture to, to be there. And when we hear all these comments from the neighbors and people wanting to protect parkland and things like that, there is no park there right now. So, there are easements, there are street easements, as Ellen said, but because right now the owners are private, we, the city, cannot dictate future use. So, that is what we are doing. We are doing good city planning right now by using a tool we have, tax increment financing, to acquire land, to build a better grid, to create a park, to, to increase the tax district that, that's there, to create the increment to then pay for it, which I think will be good for the neighborhood. I think that my council colleague, Sierra, Ms. Farmer, nailed it by saying, "So often when we hear concerns about land use and things like that, it's because people want the city to be able to control things and do things that we don't have the ability to do." So, this is the rare opportunity that we have to be proactive. And, you know, I don't necessarily love every land purchase that, that the city has made, and that, we could debate land banking, but what I do know is that the land banking strategy also has given us the opportunity to do, to do the Rivera project with a private developer, which is gonna create the largest community land trust housing project in the history of the state of Montana, which would not have happened if the city was not involved. So, there are times, and I say this as somebody who works in the private real estate world, there are times where it absolutely is better for the community that the city or some part of the government takes, takes part of that conversation, says, "We're gonna be a participant because we think that we can help advocate for the larger good of the community." And I think that's what we're doing right now with this project. To me, the first time I heard about this project, I went and actually spoke in favor of the, doing the due diligence at the MRA Board, which was publicly noticed, because I think it is, it is the perfect example of, of what good can be used with a TIF project. And if, you know, if we can't use TIF money to create a grid and to put in infrastructure, I, I don't know what else, first of all, I don't know where else a community would get those funds to do something like that, but I also don't know what else that tool would be for. I'm excited about this. The only way we have to assure that there's a park, to, to assure that there's a variety of mixed use in housing and all of those things, is to do a public purchase and a commitment to a master plan of some sort. And I think that one thing that hasn't come up, but that is also very exciting, is for, for parcels that we do turn around and sell, and I am not worried about them selling, I think that this is gonna be a very attractive area for people to, to be and to take a, take a chance, take a risk on. Those proceeds can go into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which might give us an opportunity like we've not had at the city to do real, real impactful change with that fund, instead of the, the little bit that we can put in every year. So, I understand that things like this can be controversial. I understand that it can be frustrating to, you know, have a, have a desire to want to do something, but I also think that sometimes we have to take chances and sometimes we have to look out for the, the good of the whole community, and I think this project does that.
Thank you. Mike, Gwen, go ahead.
I think Mike addressed a lot of the points I wanted to raise. I think it's a real slippery slope to start talking private property rights and only talk one side of it. This is privately held property, and the seller gets to decide who they want to sell to. It's been vacant for decades. Over those decades, there have been numerous discussions, numerous different plans, things just didn't come together. So, after decades and decades, for this to finally come together, I have a hard time sitting here listening to someone say that the city swooped in and outbid other people when it's, it's, frankly, it's up to the seller. So, I, I just wanna point that out. The other thing is, well, a couple of other things. There'll be a public process, and that's going to gather everyone's info in to see what is envisioned, and then have some reality checks on all of that to make sure it's doable, and then get a great development done. Annette, were you able to put your email up on the screen? If not, I'll just make sure people get it afterwards. I don't know if you were able to share your screen. Okay, I didn't see it up there, so we'll make sure to get it to you afterwards. The final thing I want to talk about is, today I went to the City Club Talk on why is infill development so difficult? And it was fascinating, I knew some of this, but you always hear more information. There were, there was a financial person presenting, a large contractor, a large contracting company, and then a small infill developer. And they talked through all of the complications of getting anything built, not just in Missoula, but frankly, across America these days, with the cost of labor, the cost of materials, regulations, how expensive land is, lack of a workforce, inflation. They talked through all of this, and all three said a crucial tool is tax increment financing. And I think of all the times we sit in this chamber and we defend that program, it is the program that helps us do the building, create the parks, get the open space for parks here in Missoula. It's the program. We don't have much else going on in Montana compared to other states in terms of state help or anything like this. So, to hear folks like that, who aren't getting rich, they're trying to just make the equations work to get more built because we need more supply. I think it's really important to keep that perspective, and this is exactly the type of project we want to be using tax increment financing for. This is really key. So, I'm really glad so much work went into it, and it is on the floor for us to vote tonight, and I'm definitely in favor of it.
Thanks. I don't see any other hands up, so we are going to go to a roll call vote.
Beginning the vote with Gwen Jones?
Yes.
Kristen Jordan?
Yes.
Eric Nelson?
Yes.
Mike Nugent?
Yes.
Jennifer Savage?
Yes.
Amber Sherrill?
Yes.
Sandra Vasika?
No.
Stacy Anderson?
Yes.
Bob Campbell?
No.
Daniel Carlino?
Yes.
Sierra Farm?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, and thanks for everyone coming tonight and staying with us. We're gonna move on to number 10, which is public comment on non-agenda items. So, if you have public comment on something that has not been on the agenda, please come up or raise your hand online. Okay? Okay, so, communications from the mayor. I am not the mayor, and I have nothing to say at this point. So, we're gonna move on to general comments from city council members, and Daniel, I'll start with you.
And I'll pass tonight.
Stacy?
Pass.
I'll also pass. And just so I don't, just so I don't miss you on that side of the horse, you all, I'll go back and go to Eric. Go ahead.
I'll pass tonight, thanks.
Sandy?
I just wanted to quickly remind folks that due to the holiday, we will not have council next week, but we will be excited to see everybody again on December 2nd.
Thanks, I was actually meaning to say that, so I appreciate you bringing it up. Mike?
I'll pass. I was gonna talk a little bit more about the sidewalks, but I'll do that another time.
We are gonna get an opportunity in committee to do that. Gwen? Jennifer?
Pass, thank you.
Bob?
Pass, thank you.
Kristen?
Pass, thanks.
Okay, so, I got everyone, right? Yep, okay. And so, we will be at 9:24, we will be adjourned. Thanks, everyone.